Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I'd like to call this meeting of the Bloomington City Council to order Monday, May 1st already. Thanks, everybody, for being here this evening. We traditionally start our meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance, and on special occasions, we have the honor of having the colors presented by the Bloomington Police Honor Guard. And with our swearing-in of officers this evening, this is a special occasion, so we're looking forward to that. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chief Booker Hodges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
You can be seated. It's always such a great way to start a meeting. Let's give a thanks to the Bloomington Honor Guard for their work. Once again, thank you to everyone here in the council chambers. Thanks to those folks joining us at home. Our first item of business tonight is the approval of tonight's agenda. And our agenda first starts with introductory items, and the first item of business will be the swearing-in of our Bloomington Police Department Officers and introduction of new our new Bloomington Police Employees. We also have two proclamations, one for Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month and a second for National Drinking Water Week. Under our consent business, item three on our agenda, Councilmember De La Sondro has the consent business. We have six items on the consent agenda. Under numbered four, hearings, resolutions, and ordinances. We do have three public hearings this evening. One, an ordinance amending chapters thirteen, fourteen, and Appendix Day of the City Code related to the business licensing. The second, a public hearing regarding franchise fees. And the third, a public hearing on our tree assessment levy plans. Under our organizational business, we'll have our continue our discussion on the City Code amendments and Comprehensive Plan Text Amendments for single and two-family residential standards. And we'll wrap up our evening council as we always do with our city council policy and issue update. Counsel, anything to add or corrections to tonight's agenda? If not, I would move the agenda as stated.
Second.
Motion and a second by Councilmember Lohman to accept tonight's agenda. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero, and we have an agenda. Thank you very much. Item two point one, the swearing-in of our Bloomington Police Department Officers and introduction of new employees. Chief Hodges.
All right, good afternoon, evening, I think that's what it is. So before we get started, I just want to say that this is my first group that I've hired here, so it's a really special group to me. And what you're going to get here, Bloomington, we change things up. A lot of times, people will come to council meetings and present officers prior to them completing their training, but these eight officers that you're going to get today, one is on vacation, so you'll get seven, they're all done with their training, so they're on the street. We are very fortunate here in Bloomington to be a fully-staffed police department. That's not something that you see around the metro or around the nation, and we are very fortunate for that. And you're going to get to see some very amazing human beings today that are going to join this most noble profession and, what I believe, the best police department in the country. And with that, I'll stop talking, so I'll let them come up and introduce themselves, and then we'll do the swearing-in.
Mayor, City Council, City Manager, my name is Matthew Roush. I was born and raised just across the river in Burnsville. I have an associate's degree, and I'm going for my bachelor's currently. My law enforcement training consisted of about seven years in the Seattle area, a five-month academy out there, and seven years after that. Prior to that, I was in the Marine Corps. Very happy to be here, blessed to be here, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Officer Roush, welcome.
Mayor, City Council, City Manager, my name is Nona Christofferson. I grew up in New Brighton, Minnesota. I obtained an associate's degree in law enforcement from Century College. Prior to coming to Bloomington, I worked for Scott County Sheriff's Department as a corrections officer, and I'm very happy to be here. Thank you for your time.
We're happy to have you, Officer Christofferson. Thank you.
Mayor, City Council, City Manager, my name's Kevin Schleddi. I grew up here in the Twin Cities. I have an associate's degree in law enforcement. My education in law enforcement comes from Rasmussen University Skills Program. And then, prior to becoming a police officer here, I was also a police cadet here.
Welcome, Officer Schleddi.
Mayor, City Council, City Manager, my name is Angelica Balgobin Diaz. I grew up in Lakeville, Minnesota. My degree is in criminal justice from Normandale here in Bloomington. Before coming to BPD, I was mall security at Mall of America, which we work pretty often, so it's nice to have that experience. Prior to that, I was a server, bartender, makeup artist, so a little bit of everything. Bloomington is exactly where I wanted to end it up, so I'm happy to be here. Thank you for your time.
We're happy to have you here, welcome.
Mayor, City Council Manager, City Council, my name is Austin Style. I grew up in Eagan, Minnesota. I have a bachelor's degree from the University of Minnesota in Psychology. Before I worked here, I worked about six years in construction, no previous law enforcement experience. I'm very excited and blessed to be here.
Welcome, Officer Style.
Mayor, City Council, City Manager, my name is Jake Murphy. I grew up in St. Clair Falls, Wisconsin. I attained my associate's degree from St. Cloud State. Prior to coming here, I was a St. Cloud policewoman for two years. Fortunate to be here and happy to be here, so thank you.
Thank you, Officer Murphy. I think every department needs an Officer Murphy, don't they?
Mayor, City Council, City Manager, my name is Edon Mitchell. I grew up in South Minneapolis. I attended Minnesota State University Mankato and graduated with my bachelor's degree in law enforcement. Prior to this, I worked at the Minnesota Correctional Facility in Shakopee. I'm extremely grateful to be here.
Welcome, Officer Mitchell.
Thank you.
With the introductions complete, now welcome up our city clerk Christina Scipione to administer the oath of office. Excuse me, the oath of office. And I want to say to our family members out there, this is going to happen once. You get one shot at this, do not be shy about getting the picture that you want, so feel free to stand up, move around, get closer if you'd like to, you're certainly welcome. We'll hold off just a minute here, let everybody get in position. Ms. Scipione, take it away.
Please raise your right hand. Please state your first and last name. And repeat after me. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Minnesota and will faithfully discharge the duties of a police officer for the city of Bloomington, Minnesota to the best of my judgment and ability. Congratulations.
Officers, I want to say congratulations and welcome aboard to the city of Bloomington, so glad to have you here. You obviously understand the responsibilities that come with you regarding the culture, the history, the practice of the Bloomington Police Department, and the reputation that we carry across the metro area and across Minnesota, and we can't wait for you to uphold it. You've got that extra added burden of being Chief Hodges' first class here, so you know he's going to be keeping an eye on you, but couldn't be happier to have you onboard and couldn't be prouder. And thank you, Chief Hodges, and your entire hiring team for bringing on such an impressive group of officers. Well done.
You know, cops don't want to stay around, they want to get out of here, right? Just like the hockey game, at the end of the game, shake the hands. Oh, yeah, I'll see you guys upstairs, anyway. Oh, you don't need to shake my hand. I'll see you guys later. All right, so for the families, we're going to have the gathering up in the Hague right after we get through with the civilian staff here. So Mayor, City Manager, City Council, if you'll allow me, I would like to bring up some of our new civilian staff members. Here in Bloomington, we have a cadet program, which allows us to stay ahead of the hiring curve and also allows us to bring in quality people to the organization. So, and our dispatchers, we've been fortunate to have a dispatch center that's increased in staffing fifty percent since I've been here, so that's great. Also, and then we added a position that you allowed us to have, which is the dispatch trainer. So we have our trainer onboard, which I just want the citizens of Bloomington to understand how important that position is, because previously, all of our dispatchers would have to train somebody, and they wouldn't have opportunities to get training theirself. But now, with this person able to provide that training, our dispatchers can get training, and also it helps us maintain our staff morale and wellness. So with that, I'll bring up the civilian staff. Are you guys in order either?
Mayor, City Council, City Manager, my name is Josh Davis. I am in the cadet position. I am currently obtaining my associate's degree at Century College, and prior to this, I was just a student.
Welcome aboard, Josh. Where were you just a student, Josh?
Woodbury High School, and then Century College.
Very good. Welcome aboard.
Mayor, City Council, City Manager, my name is Melissa Beckthold. I grew up in the Hopkins School District. I have a double major in theater and broadcast journalism from St. Cloud State University. I have worked many different jobs. I also lived in Mexico and did photos for SCUB trips, and I worked at bike shops, so all over the place. I'm currently in my theory post classes at Hempin Tech, and then I will do skills this summer. I'm very grateful to be here. Thank you.
Glad to have you onboard, welcome.
Mayor, City Council, City Manager, my name is Dalton Gruber. I'm the radio technician here. I grew up in Eagan, and my previous experience was I worked at a Motorola dealer in Burnsville doing the same kind of stuff, and I've really enjoyed it so far and happy to be here.
Welcome aboard, Don.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager. I'm Molly, the new dispatcher. I grew up in Pine Island, Minnesota. My degree is actually in audio production and engineering, which has much different than here at the police department, but I've done everything with event coordinations from live production to event safety to, you know, getting dumpsters and porta potties, so I'm happy to be here.
Welcome aboard, Molly.
Hello, Mayor, City Manager, City Council. My name is Katrina Trudeau. I am the new dispatch training and quality assurance coordinator. I am very grateful to be here. My prior experience is I've been a nine-one-one dispatcher for about twelve years. Previous to here, I worked at Hennepin County Dispatch. I, like I said, I'm very grateful to be here. Was so happy when this position was created and approved through you fine people, so I look forward to proving myself to everyone.
Well, welcome aboard, Katrina, thank you. Well, to all of you, welcome aboard. Thanks very much. We know how important the, obviously, the uniform staff is, but the staff that supports the uniform staff and our cadets, we know just how important it is and how it contributes to the safety in Bloomington. So, very glad to have you. Welcome aboard, look forward to seeing more of you out and about in the city of Bloomington. Thank you. Now, I know how much all of you would love to stay for the rest of the city council meeting, but if you want to go to the reception upstairs, now would be the time to do so, and we'll pause for just a moment here in the, in the, in the meeting and let you make your way out. Thank you, thanks for being here. You guys are the second proclamation, actually. Second of two. All right, we will move on with our agenda and on to item two point two, which is a proclamation for Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And it's celebrated annually to recognize the historical and cultural contributions of individuals and groups of Asian and Pacific Islander descent in the United States. And we have, we have folks here who are going to accept this. Our Human Rights Commissioner Nicole Guan and our officers of the Asian American and Pacific Islander Employee Resource Group, Mary Lee and Vidya Munusami. Did I do well on with that, or not? We will see. So why don't you come on up and join me, if you could? Just come as I read the proclamation, and then we will do the official grip and grin, turn it over to whoever is going to be speaking this evening. This is quite possibly the smallest type I've ever seen on a proclamation, so this is going to be a challenge on my eyes. Proclamation for Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, May 2023. Whereas the city of Bloomington, through its Human Rights Commission, joins our nation in recognizing the month of May as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And whereas during the month of May, we commemorate the rich and diverse culture of Americans of Asian and Pacific Islander descent and recognize that these individuals come from the forty-eight countries which make up Asia. And whereas, the 2020 census reports that 6.7% of Bloomington's population identifies as Asian or Pacific Islander American, and the city is home to a diverse group of Asian American Pacific Islanders, including Vietnamese, Cambodian, Chinese, Laotian, Tibetan, Filipino, Hmong, and Indian. And whereas, we honor the perseverance of those who courageously reach for their hopes and dreams in a new land, and we celebrate the important impact this community has made on Bloomington's progress. And whereas, the Asian American and Pacific Islander community constitutes a vital dimension of Bloomington's diverse ethnic and social fabric, whose languages, cultures, and religious beliefs have enriched communities in all parts of the state. And whereas, from the recent immigrant who brings fresh global networks, businesses, healthcare, agriculture, workforce, and languages, to the child of mixed race who represents the diversity of all our communities, they have helped to uphold the founding principles of Bloomington for generations. And whereas, taking into account the increasing anti-Asian hate crimes and xenophobia against the Asian American and Pacific Islander community, Bloomington denounces these crimes and will continue to address the needs and concerns of our valued residents. And whereas, the city of Bloomington Asian American Pacific Islander Employee Resource Group was created in January 2023 with a mission to promote an inclusive environment for all Asian identified employees, where members have the ability to share their cultural heritage, offer educational and professional development opportunities, and advocate for the communities we serve. And whereas, the city of Bloomington Asian American Pacific Islander Employee Resource will host a celebration in May to commemorate the history, culture, and heritage of Asian American Pacific Islander identified individuals and communities who contribute to the state of Minnesota and the United States. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Tim Bussie, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2023 as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in the city of Bloomington dated this first day of May 2023. Thank you all for being here this evening, greatly appreciated. I'm going to turn the mic over, who's, who's speaking? Okay, very good. Step on up, and I will turn that over to you.
I'd like to thank the mayor and council for having me. My entire life has truly been a journey of tearing down and building back up my cultural pride. I was one of the few Asian American students in my predominantly white elementary and middle schools, and this sense of inferiority had fueled my resentment towards my distinctions. I stuck out with my black hair that voided like ying and my eyes that folded like the intricacies of a paper crane, and these aspects were the true embellishments of my identity, yet I hid them. Now, as a high school senior, I still attend a white-majority school. However, my scope of diversity is expanding. In my sophomore year, I participated in the Bloomington Anti-Racist Coalition's Racial Affinity Group, the first that I and many other Bloomington students have ever heard of. The established safe space was where I first candidly expressed my cultural desolation. Sorry. I recognized that my consistent concern about my outward perception had deprived the potential of my cultural appreciation. Thus, I became empowered to amend my pride in being Chinese. Additionally, I participated in my school's Asian American Student Union. I was devoted in acknowledging the diversity and intricacy of Asian cultures. The club was an open armed community for members to embrace their unique cultures while exploring the cultures of others. Whether it was boba socials, recipe sharing, or Sudoku races, I proudly indulged in the activities I would have otherwise denounced without communal support. Moreover, I easier embodied my self-expression when surrounded by individuals who understood my identity. Throughout high school, I strived to provide myself and others with the cultural visibility and unity that I wish I had in my youth. On that note, it is an honor for me to be here today to celebrate Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month with you all. This month is a time to especially recognize and celebrate the incredibly rich culture and history of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders. This month, we celebrate the many accomplishments and contributions of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders in science, technology, business, art, literature, and so much more. We also recognize the sacrifices and hardships that many have faced in order to achieve these accomplishments. It is for the acts against civil injustice that Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have sacrificed that I am able to speak to you all today. Additionally, I would like to thank all of the communities that have supported me in becoming proud of who I am. As we celebrate this month, let us remember the importance of diversity and the need to embrace and appreciate the different cultures and backgrounds that enrich our city, country, and lives. Thank you.
Anybody else? No? Okay. Here's the grip and grin part of all of this. You can hold the proclamation right in the middle. And? You good to go? Congratulations. Thank you all so much for being here.
Thank you.
Item two point three on our agenda is our second proclamation of the evening. This for National Drinking Water Week, and I will say, when I started on the city council a long time ago, this was the first proclamation that I can recall, primarily because of the, the drop of water there. That's exactly it. So we have a National Drinking Water Week proclamation recognizing this week is National Drinking Water Week. Drinking Water Week, May 7 through the, well, actually, come on up, let's get in the shot. We've got to, we've got to make this a good shot, I can't forget that. I think we have utility operators Kale Sprout and Adam Lingle, and?
Eric Hershey.
Oh, I'm sorry, they gave me the wrong sheet. I apologize, Eric. I apologize. Drinking Water Week, May 7 through the 13th, 2023. Whereas water is our most valuable natural resource. And whereas only tap water delivers public health protection, fire protection, support for our economy, and the quality of life we enjoy. And whereas, any measure of a successful society, low morality rates, economic growth and diversity, productivity and public safety are in some way related to access to safe water. And whereas, we are all stewards of the water infrastructure upon which future generations depend. And whereas each citizen in our community is called upon to help protect our source waters from pollution, to practice water conservation, and to get involved in local water issues by getting to know their water. Now therefore, I, Mayor Tim Bussie, do hereby proclaim May 7 through the 13th, 2023, as Drinking Water Week in the city of Bloomington, and I urge all citizens to continue their efforts to protect our most valuable natural resource. The fourth whereas that I mentioned there, "we're all stewards of the water infrastructure upon which we and our future generations depend," is a testament to the gentleman behind me. behind me because it is a, an incredibly important part of what we do in the city is providing safe and accessible drinking water. When you turn on the tap, the only time you notice it is when the water doesn't come out. And these folks do an outstanding job making sure it does come out, making sure that the infrastructure is in shape and, and can deliver to each city. And not only that, they just don't provide the basic services. We have the best drinking water in the nation, without question. And that's, it's been proven in a couple of taste tests and contests across the nation, but everybody I know talks about it, everybody I know compliments, and especially in comparison to our neighbor cities. So hats off, gentlemen, hats off. I'm remembering the name, is it?
Kale Sprut.
No, Kale and Eric, is it?
Tommy Womack.
What's the name of the drippy?
Tommy Womack.
Tommy, the name of the mascot? Willie Water, thank you, thank you. That's what I was going for. That's what I was going for. Gentlemen, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Let's get a picture here. Willie, can you hold the proclamation for us here? There you go. Very good. Thank you, guys. Thanks very much. Item three on our agenda is our consent business for this evening. Councilmember Dalisandro has the consent business. Councilmember Dalisandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I heard of no holds. I'll make one quick final ask, otherwise, no takers? Great. Then I will move tonight's consent agenda, items 3.1 through 3.6.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Dalisandro, second by Councilmember Martin to accept our consent business as stated this evening. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Councilmember Dalisandro. Moving to item four on our agenda, this is our hearings, resolutions, and ordinances. And our first public hearing of the evening is a public hearing on an ordinance amending chapters 13, 14, and Appendix A of the city code related to business licensing. And Mr. Doug Junker, our deputy clerk, is here. Mr. Junker, good evening.
Good evening, council, mayor and council. Maybe you remember back to February when we kind of presented, oh, I get my clicker tonight. We talked about this, kind of teed this up, got your thoughts on this back on February 27th. Some code amendments here to kind of help both staff and the applicants through the process a little bit, a little bit more efficiency. We have a few of them that had some really weird fees that we tried to clean up and then just trying to get caught up with the times, the modern day. You gave us some direction back then, and I think we even took some more ideas from ELC as we get into it. The first one is just simple fee. Laundromats, we have a very odd fee structure on that. There's a per machine basis with a minimum and a maximum and all this kind of stuff. All our, all our laundromats are at the max, and we just wanted to try to make that simple.
Doug, can I ask you to advance the slider?
Oh, I'm sorry.
There we go.
Well, you give me a clicker, now I have to do it myself. So, there we go. Throwing me a curveball tonight. All right, they finally let me drive and I screwed it up. All right.
They leave you hanging, Doug. I know, I felt it, believe me.
I know, I saw that. All right, so, laundromats have the per machine with the minimum and the max. We're just proposing the 350. The 350 is kind of a interpretation of what may come in the May 22 meeting. We have fees coming back to you then with a 3% increase. So this is less than 3% over the 34150. So just a flat rate fee, keeping it simple. Obviously, even if it's 10 machines or 20 machines, environmental health is in there for quite a time doing that inspection, so it's pretty similar. Click. All right. Massage therapy, I know you're all very familiar with this. This is not a state mandate, it's in our code that we license massage. And in our code, we require that all new massage is council approved. And that includes every new massage license, even though it's an existing license and they move spaces, I come back. So with body art, it's administrative. I approve all the body art, and we don't really see a lot of difference between body art and massage. So we're looking at this being an administrative approval, no council approval. And I'm just going to add at this point, with massage and any other license we have, if we ever have a violation that we want to talk about revocation or suspension, that's not up to me. We'll always come back to you guys for that, that discussion. And this also doesn't take away any other part of the code as far as our background checks and what we do with liquor or massage or any of those. Nothing's changing, we're just talking about that, having to put it in the paper, the formal announcement, and coming to you every time we do these, these hearings or these licenses. Next up was for liquor. Again, we did a survey and we found that it was kind of a little bit all over the place. There's some cities that were like us that had formal hearings, but there was like a half a dozen cities that just did it on consent, and that's what we're looking at here. State does require that you sign off on liquor licenses, so that's why we, we do need to have a council approval on these, but there's nothing that says it has to be a formal public hearing. We can do this on consent. So real simple there. Where this really helps us, especially with liquor, and it's just so happened, I was going back and forth with a potential hotel sale today, is trying to hit that timing mark with the sale. And when I have to factor in three weeks to advertise for that hearing, it's really hard for me to hit that. But now, we can kind of pick a date, and I can get it on the next consent if we have to. So this is really going to help us. And again, with that Tokyo the World Expo and all these other things coming up, this will really streamline that liquor portion. So liquor is a very timely one already, a lot of backgrounds, a lot of things we check, but that three weeks of advertising is really hard for us. There's some money saving to stuff too with those ads. They're always a big ad, especially with those renewals. Big, big ad. And finally, removing some stuff out of code. As we discussed, taxis have gotten way ahead of us. Uber, Lyft, everybody, ride sharing, whatever you want to call it, has gotten way out in front of us. And we haven't had a taxi driver or a car in about five or six years. It, we used to be really hot and heavy with that, it just, it just died off about six years ago. Again, we promise that we'll keep an eye on this industry. This thing is changing and changing all the time, and if there's something that we feel we need to regulate, we'll definitely jump on that and get it back to you. So in our ordinance amendment, we've taken out the entire taxi section. We also discussed amusement devices, which was very similar to laundry with this weird fee structure. And a lot of you kept asking, why? Why do we even do them? And we got back in the office and we started kind of questioning that too. So we moved amusement devices from fixing the fee to actually striking it. If it's a gambling device, the state's all over that, we would refer that to the state anyways. But amusement devices, we didn't really find any value in trying to license them anymore either. So we're proposing that we, we strike that from the code. And that's about it. Any questions for me?
Thank you, Mr. Junker. Council, we talked about this, as Mr. Junker said back in February, had a good conversation on that. I'm just amazed to hear that there are zero taxi cab licenses, given the number of hotels in the city, that we have zero taxi cab licenses in the city of Bloomington. Is it possible?
Not saying, Mr. Mayor, not saying there isn't any taxis in Bloomington, but even when I drive around to what used to be my old haunts, the old taxi stands, I'm not seeing nearly as many taxis or any of them. You go to the mall and there's more Uber and Lyft than there is taxis now. Uber and Lyft really put the taxi industry on their ear in a way, and a lot of the taxi companies, the smart ones, moved with it. So airport created iHail. We had 1010 Taxi move in from Colorado. And when they came, I knew the end was near. They're a very, very cool cab company, and it's all iPad-based and technology-based. And our code's all about these meters and all this other stuff, and it was something we'd never seen before. So we knew the new age of taxi was coming when they came to town. So there are taxis still here and there, but they just stopped coming to get licensed, and it was really hard talking to the officers on the street too. It was really hard for them when it was Uber, Uber Lyft, Uber Taxi, Uber Lyft. They're supposed to go write that one guy a ticket. It's kind of hard when all these other guys are there. So yeah, it's, it's something that we definitely want to keep an eye on, and we've talked about, you know, automated cars and all these other weird things that are being discussed in all the science magazines and stuff. Something I definitely will probably want to look into as these things materialize.
Interesting, and you're right, a rapidly evolving industry.
Very quickly.
Yep, absolutely. Council, questions of Mr. Junker on this? No questions, council? Very good. Thank you, Mr. Junker. This is a public hearing, and so I will open the public hearing at item 4.1. It's a hearing on an ordinance amending chapters 13 and 14 and Appendix A of the city code related to business licensing. Anyone in the council chambers wishing to speak to item 4.1 this evening? Mr. Sable, do we have anyone on the line?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, no one is on the line.
Last call for anybody in the chambers? Council, no one coming forward in the chambers, no one on the phone wishing to speak to item 4.1? I look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Martin, second by Councilmember Carter to close the public hearing at item 4.1. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Council, any questions or conversation, discussion on item 4.1? If not, council, I'd look for action on item 4.1.
Mayor?
Councilmember Martin.
Thank you. I will move that we adopt an ordinance amending chapters 13, 14, and Appendix A of the city code relating to business licensing.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Martin, second by Councilmember Carter to adopt an ordinance amending chapters 13, 14, and Appendix A of the city code related to business licensing. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Councilmember Martin.
Mayor, I will also motion that we adopt a resolution directing summary publication for the ordinance amending chapters 13, 14, and Appendix A of the city code related to business licensing.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Martin, second by Councilmember Carter for summary publication on item 4.1. No further council discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Thank you much. Thank you, Mr. Junker. I'm assuming we're going to see you less and less now after the adoption of this, but thank you for pulling this all together for your work on this. Item 4.2 on our agenda this evening is a public hearing regarding an increase to our franchise fees. We have our CFO, Lori Economy Scholler, and we've got our engineering staff here, Julie Long and Bob Simons, to talk to us about this. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, mayor and council.
Good evening. Good evening, mayor and council. We're back here tonight to talk about our franchise fee update for 2024. I'll kick off the presentation, give a little bit of information on background and history, and Bob Simons with our engineering department. Julie will get into some current status and condition, and then Lori will finish it off with some information on our 2024 proposed rates, and we'll also give some information on the public engagement that we've done through, over the course of the past month and a half. A little bit of background, back in 2015, franchise fees were implemented with the goal to implement changes in funding for the pavement management program, showing council's commitment to maintaining a sustainable and consistent funding source for our PMP overlays, seal coating, park trail construction and maintenance, and right-of-way trail construction and maintenance. And when these were implemented, it was never intended to fund, fully fund the pavement management program, but rather using these four different, or funding with these four different areas. History of the franchise fees in Bloomington. In December of 2015, city council approved the implementation of franchise fees with the next increase scheduled to be in January 1st of 2021. In April of 2016, we began collection of those franchise fees. From 2016 through the present, franchise fees have been used to fund our overlays, our seal coats, our park trail construction and maintenance, our right-of-way construction and maintenance, and we'll show a few slides of the work that's been, that's been done here shortly. In the summer of 2020, due to COVID-19, the increase that was supposed to occur at that point, management decided to delay that, scheduled 2021 rate increase to 2022. And then in July of 2021, we came back to council and approved the franchise fee increase for 2022, which also included some future CIP multimodal projects and the inclusion of sidewalks as well. Just once again, the four different areas that are funded by our franchise fees. How our funding for the utilization of our franchise fees is used for our PMP program. For our street reconstruction projects, we do not use franchise fees, that's funded through our property tax levy and special assessments. Our street mill and overlay uses franchise fees and also our infrastructure replacement fund or Minnesota state aid maintenance dollars. Seal coat uses franchise fees, trails and parks and right-of-way construction and maintenance uses franchise fees. And sidewalks use two different pots of money, both the property tax levy and franchise fees, and we'll give a little bit more information on that here shortly. Here you can see our seal coat street segments from 2016 through the present. We've done just over 50 miles of street seal coats since 2016. You can see our overlay segments here, we've done, I believe it's 100 and, yeah, just over 150, excuse me, just over 150 miles of seal coat segments. We've done just about 60 miles of overlay segments. You'll notice on the east side of town, you don't see as much of the street mill and overlays. East side of town, we have much better soils, the streets hold up very well. And that's also the area where we have a percentage of our streets that don't have existing curb and gutter, and we typically, per the program, do not mill and overlay streets that don't have a curb and gutter. We either seal coat or we fully reconstruct them. It's just better, better cost benefit for us in the long run. And then we have our trail reconstructs, both right-of-way trails in blue and park trails in red. Since 2016, approximately eight miles of right-of-way trails have been reconstructed and two miles of park trails. And we'll show in an upcoming slide the overall plan for the city showing both right-of-way trail, park trail, and some sidewalk inclusion as well. And Julie will give some information on the status and condition.
So we have 341 centerline miles of streets, and we inspect those every three years. People walk and segue on the streets and count the different cracks, and so we end up with a category of reconstruct, overlay, and seal coat. We have about 210 miles of concrete sidewalk, and in general, those are in really good condition. And you'll see that we don't have our same kind of pavement condition index on those because if you've ever walked sidewalk, you're going to be like, five panels are great, there's one crappy panel because maybe a tree root or something else, and then, you know, we've got good panels again. So we, we've been doing them as in generally good or poor conditions. We're not rating them like we do a street that you're familiar with. The other thing we're looking at is deficient width. So a lot of Bloomington sidewalks, when Bloomington was originally constructed, it was attached sidewalk immediately adjacent to the curb, and it's only four feet wide. It's a problem now when we have sidewalk plows that are six feet wide. So we have a math problem there. So we have 23 miles of those. We have 43 miles of asphalt trails, 27 of them are in the right-of-way, and 16 miles are in the park trails. And you can see that we have about four and a half miles of what we would consider deficient trails around town. Those are primarily on Normandale Boulevard and Old Chocopee Road. And as Bob mentioned earlier, when we started with this program, we had 10 miles, so we've made really good progress. This is our pavement lifecycle that council has seen frequently, but for the public and those who are watching, if we build a street or a trail and do no maintenance, on your average kind of soil, not your east side really sandy stuff, and not your west side really crappy clay stuff, but on your average soil, you'd expect to get about 20 years out of service life out of that road. If we provide seal coats and overlays similar to if you take your car with a combustion engine and you get oil changes appropriately and you get engine tune-ups, you can make that vehicle last longer, we can make that pavement last longer. So that's what we're looking to do with our pavement lifecycle. So here is the map of the 23 miles of deficient sidewalk across town. You can see, it's all over the place. These are our non-compliant pedestrian ramps, and I know it's very disheartening to look at that, and you won't be able to tell the difference, but this next one, 51% are compliant out of those almost 4,800 pedestrian ramps. So we've made good progress, and you can also kind of see all of them in straight lines. Those are appealing to the engineer who sees them as pavement management projects. So. One of the things we have talked about is doing more sidewalk with the pavement management program and with some of the franchise fees. So we just wanted to highlight one of the projects that's actually on this year's PMP project. We are connecting a sidewalk connection from Bloomington Avenue to East 80th, and it actually connects to sidewalk that we built with the PMP back in 2017. And so there's a large pedestrian population with Georgetown and Tiki Apartments, and so we find this very useful. And it's one of those things that when we come and approve plans and specs, we don't usually highlight them for you, and we thought this was a good opportunity to just to let you know what good work we're doing with those funds. So these are the future trails and sidewalks that Bob mentioned. It shows not only the trails and sidewalk with the pavement management program, but also in the capital improvement plan and the Parkmaster Plan, and some of the work that's going to be done with the Min.494 project. These are the PMP seal coat projections. Traditionally, our seal coats- Traditionally, our seal coats in the 25 to 30-mile range excluding 2020 when, due to COVID and some concerns with the budget, we eliminated the seal coat. One of the changes that you're going to see here in 2023 is we are joining the joint powers agreement to do seal coat with many of our surrounding communities like Burnsville, Eagan, Chocopee. These are the overlay projections we're proposing to do, well, actually, we've been awarded, close to 10 miles of overlay this year. We're reducing it to nine miles in the next two years and then eight miles. And that has to do with mainly when the streets were built, so there is a big bell curve, and we're coming at the end of the bell curve. And we'll be looking at that. This is the PMP park trail projections. It is not only including the reconstruction of park trails along the right-of-way, but also includes those that are connecting to the Parkmaster Plan. So it will include areas upcoming soon like Bryant, Tretbrauk, Countryside, and Moyer. These are the right-of-way trails. We continue to work on those, and we're also, you can see some bumps here and there with some additional sidewalks. So we have a couple of years programmed where we have about a half mile of sidewalk. And again, the bigger years, larger segments in 24 and 25, those are the upcoming Normandale trail projects. Turn it over to Lori.
Mayor and counsel, with the increase proposed on the screen, it is currently $1.35 for the residential increase that we are showing for 2024. When we put the franchise in an initial increase, you know, we had scheduled an increase back for 2021, and we delayed that one. And we only put in for '22, '23 the rate that's currently out there at $4.60 for the residential. We put in the lowest possible amount that we could to maintain the program up until knowing that we were going to start coming back every two years. This is a larger bump at $1.35. And then when you look at, well, we might look at for 2026, it's about 75 cents to a dollar range there. So I mean, this is the bump that's going to get us caught up to where we were starting to program back in 2016 when we started the program. And so putting all the numbers from Public Works and what they need for all of these improvements, this is the schedule that we are proposing for the dollar amounts, the $1.35 for the residential. And the commercials all have the same percentage increase in their rates. At, currently at 29%, but we're catching up from before. So there's that. Public engagement?
Sure. All right. A little bit of information on the public engagement we've done over the course of the past month. We held an open house on Thursday, April 13th, from 5:00 to 6:00 in the Bloomington Civic Plaza. The intention was to host that adjacent to the Planning Commission meeting, but after we had already sent out all of our social media blasts and got all the information out there to everybody, that Planning Commission meeting was canceled. So trying to coincide with it, but it didn't work out so well for us. But so as I mentioned, we had social media blasts go out in the week of March 27th and April 10th for that open house, also for the open house and for the public hearing. There was also a pop-up event that was held at Southgate on Wednesday, April 19th. There was a Spanish translator that was available at that pop-up event, and we did have two individuals at the open house and then five individuals at the pop-up event at Southgate. And then we also hosted a Let's Talk Bloomington page. The page went live on March 20th on Let's Talk Bloomington. It was an update to the page that we had previously two years ago when we did our last update. And we put it out to social media, all of our e-subscribe folks, got it out to as many folks as we could. And we did have nine questions that were posted on the page, a few phone calls as well, and those questions and answers are included in your packet. The remaining timeline here, we're here tonight for the public hearing, May 1st. If this is approved tonight, the 90-day period will start for the Public Utilities Commission to process and request and prepare for the collection of the fees, and then January 1st of 2024, those new rates would go into effect. And with that, we just have the motions for CenterPoint Energy and Excel, and we'll open it up to any questions.
Thank you very much. Thanks for the information. For both the, for both of the types of trails, both flavor of trails, there was a pretty good increase over the next decade or so. I'm assuming that's an increase in trails as opposed to just an increase in costs. Am I correct in that assumption?
It's both.
It's both?
Construction costs have gone up significantly, so we're anticipating additional costs for the trail segments that were programmed, along with some additional trails.
So we do see an additional amount of work that's going to be going on, but we also see additional costs that kind of come with the inflation of it all. Got it. And if you could, Ms. Long, you mentioned the joint powers agreement. Tell me more about that, if you could.
I will do my best, but I am not an expert on our seal coat program. But we used to bid our work and do it internally ourselves. But because of some procurement contract things, the supplier didn't want to bid on our job any longer. So we were looking at alternatives to find a way to do that. And in the south metro, there's a group of communities that do it together. And so we've done that. We've started that. We've seen the crack ceiling has been out by contract this year. And then the seal coat will be done that same way.
Good. Look forward to hearing how that goes and hearing more about that in terms of both how you get it done and what the financial impact might be on that. So counsel, additional questions on this? Councilmember Alessandro.
I just had a, your question sparked a question for me. Is there, is it a single bidder? Is that, is there's no competitive offering for those seal coats? Is that what we're, I mean, is that why we're going into the consortium? Because they don't want to bid on our work, but there's only one, there's only one operator in town?
When we were looking at supplier, when we were trying to find the oil to put down with the seal coat, yes. Flint Hills Refinery, given their location, was the only bidder that we would get bids from. Now that they are in the consortium, there are other vendors who will do it, but I do believe Flint Hills is probably still the only supplier.
Understood. Thanks.
Additional questions? Councilmember Loman?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm not sure if this is really for staff. I do know that there were some questions that were in the, from a public engagement where the response was, "Thank you for your inquiry, and your correspondence will be shared with the Bloomington City Council." And so I wasn't sure with any of those ones if the expectation was that we would answer that at this point in time, some of those questions that are there. You know, just for example, we have one here that says, you know, "Why could you possibly need an increase that large when homeowners pay for new streets? I'm already, you know, cleaning gutters and snow from hydrants, you know, didn't property taxes go up, you know, enough, you know? I don't know if that's a, you know, if that's something we want to answer, you know, as a council, but there were a number of ones that were, you know, placed in there. And that I just, I wonder if they need a response to some degree.
Councilmember, I think based on the fact that you're in the packet and you had a chance to read them, we all had the chance to read them, they have indeed been shared with the city council. And if it was a, if it was part of a public hearing, if folks came forward at a public hearing, more often than not, unless there was a specific question, what we would be doing would be taking their feedback. We would be listening. If they wanted specific, you know, if they had specific questions, they would be answered by staff. But what those responses, and I saw those as well, I think what those responses did more than anything was just present an opinion of folks, of certain people regarding this program in general. And again, the fact that they were in the packet, the fact that we all had the chance to read them, I read them, you read them, obviously, and I'm sure everybody else did as well. They are part of the record, and they have been, in fact, presented to the council.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Mayor, for your response to that, because I just wanted to be sure that folks don't get the impression that, one, we don't read those and, you know, and that we don't, you know, reading and understanding where there's that. I think there's some really good, interesting ones that were raised here, and I think that staff has, to a degree, answered a lot of those questions about it. And some of these are, as you said, opinions, but I wanted to not let this get by because there were quite a few of those that were kind of noted that way, and I wanted to make sure there was some type of response.
Very good. Thank you, councilmember. Counsel, anything else? Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to state that I support these, but I also, because of the projects that they do, but I also would like to continue to look at alternatives to the way from the franchise fees and just put this into the levy into our regular budget process and things like that. And I think I've stated that before, but just wanted to bring it up again. So, but the projects are good. They need to be funded, and absent a different source at this point, I would support them.
Thank you, councilmember Nelson. Counsel, anything else? If not, counsel, this is a public hearing, and I'm going to open the public hearing now. Thank you very much for the presentation. Appreciate it. Public hearing on item 4.2 regarding our franchise fee increase. Is there anyone in the council chambers here wishing to speak to item 4.2 on tonight's agenda? Mr. Sable, anyone on the phone?
Mr. Mayor, council members, no one on the phone.
Last call for anybody in the chambers? Nobody in the chambers coming forward and no one on the phone. Counsel, I look for a motion to close the public hearing on item 4.2.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Loman, second by Councilmember Muah to close the public hearing on item 4.2. No further counsel discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero closing the public hearing. So, Councilmember Loman, you bring up a good point, and I did see some of the comments and some of the questions about what we were doing here and the spending on this. I think this is another in a line of examples that we've been showing how our, how our programming, how the operations, how our spending at the city reflect the values of the community, reflect what we hear from people. We've seen at the last two council meetings swearing in 18 firefighters and seven new police officers tonight. We heard from the council that there's this value and this desire for public safety spending, and that's what we've done. We've heard countless times the community looking for spending on trails, whether they're in parks or in right-of-way, for both recreational use, but also for just walkability of the city. We've heard that a number of times, and that's what this is for right now. We've heard that people value good streets. We heard it especially this winter when anybody had to travel outside of the city of Bloomington, how much they value the quality of the streets in Bloomington. That's what this is funding. This is, as I said, an example of the city funding and reacting to the values and the desires of the community. And yes, it is an increase because, as we heard from the staff report, costs are increasing, demands are increasing, people want more. We are a 50-year-old community where things are aging out, and we need to continue the work to keep our infrastructure up to speed and up to quality. And that's what we're doing here. I certainly understand and appreciate the commentary and some of the questions we see, we received through Let's Talk Bloomington. But I do think this, as I said, is another in a line of examples of the council reacting to the desires and the values of the community. Councilmember Loman?
You know, Mayor, thank you, you know, for your statements. And I also heard, you know, from staff talk about, you know, the fact, you know, certainly, we heard this as a part of our strategic priority. You know, folks are, you know, sensitive, you know, to, you know, price changes and, you know, increases in taxes and fees and that type of thing. You know, but what I also heard from this presentation is that staff diligently, you know, took an approach by which, you know, to keep those, keep those fees down over those couple of years. And I wanted to add that on to that, that I think that our staff tries to do that, you know, really throughout our entire policies, trying to figure out the ways in which to make it the most sustainable from a financial kind of standpoint. You know, and Mayor, you've talked about that many a times, you know, in the past too, so I don't, you know, but I do think that, you know, from overall perspective, this idea of the values in which that we support here, and the thing that I particularly liked that we were able to get done with this particular council was around sidewalks and bringing that and getting a sustainable place to be able to have those dwell and really create this equity, you know, across the city. And so I absolutely agree with your statement in terms of these reflecting these values. I don't know if anybody else has anything else to say, but I'm more than happy to move this with that, with the things you said and, you know, what this council, I know, values.
We'll get to the motion in just a second. Councilmember, Councilmember Alessandro?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, so I think, I think a couple of things just to note. You know, I know we talk about this being a franchise fee update, but each of us is going to get hit twice with this, right? One for our Excel bill and one for our CenterPoint Energy bill. So we should talk about it as it being twice as much as this per resident, right? And I think that that's important. Now, I'm not suggesting that it's not, it's not necessary. I would agree actually with Councilmember Nelson that we should just include it in the Public Works General Fund levy, frankly, because we already know that that's a value that the city residents share with us. And as it is Water Week, you know, a good example of why we spend the money where we spend it, right? So if we really do care about it, we would just make it part of our core budget, in my opinion, because that's where the values then are. My only comment is, I would really like to see, I know I've said this before, I'm going to talk about a road diet, y'all are going to hate me, but I, the people in this city do value our trails and our sidewalks and multimodal transportation. And I would like to see us doing on a proportional basis, less with these dollars on maintenance of roads. And I'm not saying they should go badly, but there's a lot of room between that .65 and that .35. And I'm not 100% sure that we have to do yearly maintenance every time in order to get this done. And I'd love to see that work done so that this time next year, we, whether we bring it into the next year's budget or we do a franchise fee increase in two years or whatever it is, we're looking at that a little bit differently going forward. Thanks.
Councilmember? Counsel, any other comments, questions? If not, Councilmember Loman, we have actually two motions, one for CenterPoint Energy and one for Excel Energy. Councilmember Loman?
I didn't look when I agreed to do this. Feeling it now. I'll move to adopt an ordinance amending Bloomington City Ordinance 2021, '22 to amend the gas franchise fee on CenterPoint Energy for providing gas service within the city of Bloomington, Minnesota. And to adopt a resolution.
I think we have to do that separately? Yep, let's do these separately. Let's do these separately. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Loman, second by Councilmember Muah to adopt the ordinance amending Bloomington City Ordinance to amend the gas franchise fee on CenterPoint Energy. No further counsel discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Councilmember Loman, summary publication on this one.
Oh, well, okay. Now, if I would have saw that, I would have stopped right away. Move to adopt a resolution directing summary publication of an ordinance amending Bloomington City Ordinance to amend the gas franchise fee on CenterPoint Energy for providing gas services within the city of Bloomington.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Loman, second by Councilmember Muah for summary publication on the CenterPoint Energy portion of item 4.2. No further counsel discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero for summary publication. Councilmember Loman?
I'll move to adopt an ordinance amending Bloomington City Ordinance 2021, '23 to amend the electrical franchise fee on Northern State's Power Company, DBA, Excel Energy, for providing electric services within the city of Bloomington, Minnesota.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Loman, second by Councilmember Muah to adopt an ordinance amending the city ordinance to amend the electric franchise fee on, I miss NSP, on Northern State's Power doing business as Excel Energy. No further counsel discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries seven zero. And Councilmember Loman?
Move to adopt a resolution directing summary publication of an ordinance amending Bloomington City Ordinance 2021, '23 to amend the electrical franchise fee on Northern State's Power Company, DBA, Excel Energy for providing Excel, electric services within the city of Bloomington, Minnesota.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Loman, second by Councilmember Muah for summary publication on the Excel Energy portion of item 4.2. No further counsel discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Councilmember Loman. Thank you to staff for the presentation on this. Thanks so very much. Moving on, item 4.3 on our agenda, our last public hearing of the evening.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Alessandro?
Yeah, if I may, I have like a general question about the ordinances we just passed, if that's all right with you. I'm just, I'm just wondering if, is there an obligation that Excel and CenterPoint pass those fees on to residents? Or they do have the choice not to, don't they? Do you know?
Ms. Manderscheid, Mr. Verbrugge, I do believe they have the option to, but I don't think it's a feasible opportunity option, is it?
Mayor members, my understanding is that the next step is that should they desire to raise rates, they would then proceed to the Public Utilities Commission. And then they would go through that rate raising process. We also have our newest attorney here, Nick Redmond, who would possibly also be able to add more to it if you want more information.
And councilmember, does that help?
It does. I just wondered if it, it feels like a pass-through, but I just don't know if it has to be a pass-through. And then, so my comment would be to the public, if they want to make commentary to the Public Utilities Commission about those things, they can do that.
Very good point, councilmember.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Very good. Unless there are further questions, we will move on to item 4.3 on our agenda tonight. This is regarding a public hearing regarding our tree assessment levy plans. We had this discussion back in February. I'm trying to recall when we had this discussion. And welcome back. We'll have the conversation, continue the conversation. Ms. Economy Scholler?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. With me this evening is...
I'm Dave Hanson, Mayor of City Council.
And I'm Dustin Jacobson.
So, we're here to present the public hearing announcement, information for the tree assessment ordinance and levy plan changes. So, last September, we presented the information to the city council in regards to just where the tree assessments were. At that point, you can see in 2022, there is 157 invoices totaled in 2022. And in conversations, when you look at the 22 amount moving over, the average invoice for that was almost $1,900. That represents at least two trees to be removed from, on average, on each one of these properties when you move through that. And there's the number that 2021 was at 100 invoices and 157 in 2022. And so, in looking at some of the comments and feedback the council presented, gave to us about five, six weeks ago, is just the number of levy situations or events that we could do. And if we moved it to a three, a five, and a 10-year versus what we had proposed, we're capturing 83% of the assessments in the first go-round and allow them up to a three-year levy assessment. And so...
Over to me. So, we included some information on our program and some data. So, this first graphic shows the addresses where private tree removal has occurred from Emerald Ash Bore. Like Lori said, many of these addresses have more than one tree. So, the legend on the right is just the number of addresses. Some of the notable things on this chart is, it really illustrates where we are discovering it more. It illustrates where we discovered it initially, back in 2016 down by Mount Springs Park, was some of the original private trees that we discovered. But of note is that it was originally discovered in the area at Fort Snelling, at the golf carts in particular. So, if you look in the northeastern part of the city, you'll see some green dots that correspond with some of the earlier infested trees that we discovered. And then, moving just a little bit to the west, you see that large cluster of yellow and orange that indicates the newest discoveries of just the last few years. One thing to know about this pest is that it's really difficult to detect at low levels. When we first knew we had it in town, we spent a lot of time stripping bark and taking trees apart. Now, the pest level is at such, so high that the woodpeckers tell us where the trees are now, and they're a lot easier to identify just by the woodpecker activity blonding the bark. I will add that this, these dots represent about 1,300 private trees that we've taken down through this program since we found Emerald Ash Bore in Bloomington. And also notable is the DNR Community Forest Survey tells us that about 15% of our overall canopy in Bloomington is ash trees. We don't know exactly what that number is, but we do believe that 15% is ash trees. All right, and then our next map. This indicates all the public tree removals. And we didn't break these down by year. We broke them down by boulevard and park. So, the blue dots represent removals in parks. So, some of the things that are interesting about this map for us, we know where these ash trees are in parks. We know where they are on boulevards. This map shows where we've done all preemptive work. Most of these trees were taken out ahead of being noticeably infested. And it's just an indication of how ash trees are spread across our city and where we've been dealing with it. If you think about East Bloomington and where we first discovered it near Columbus Play Lot, within the first couple of years, we were able to get all the ash trees down and replaced within a mile of Columbus Play Lot. So, that included Kelly and Running, Soons, Parker's Picnic area, all those parks. We've eliminated all the ash trees out of that and replanted over the last five, six years. For specific numbers, the public park trees that we've removed is 1,450 through this plan, and we've removed 1,340-ish boulevard trees. And we have a replanting effort too. So, largely through our gravel bed nursery, but some contracted larger bald and burlap trees and a few donations from Tree Trust, we've put back just over 2,000 trees into parks and then right-of-ways that we manage adjacent to public property or streetscape areas like 98th and Lyndale or along the Ferry Bridge and Medians. We do not do planting adjacent to private property in boulevards. And I think that's all I wanted to highlight on this slide.
Okay. So, existing within our current ordinance is a one-year assessment at an interest rate of 8%. And in the proposed ordinance, we can allow up to 10 years for payment of the trees, and we are proposing an interest rate at 6.5%. Currently, again, that 8%, a one-levy year term. What we had originally discussed with council were these four levy terms. And currently, we are looking at these three. Where in the first less than $3,000 piece, we can capture 83% of those that have been taken down so far in that three-year period, and it will really ease the burden of financial impact to the residents. So, just some follow-up from our April discussion. We have worked with our Office of Racial Equity and Belonging to do a racial impact assessment. And Faith Jackson, our racial equity, our chief racial equity person, has gone through and walked finance through filling out the form and completing the form. And then, we've got some payment timelines because there was some questions on how they can make some prepayments before the levy is assessed, some tree removal process that Dave and Dustin will go through, and then tree replacement. So, I know this is a little more difficult to read, but they have, you would see here where, in the orange is where the tree was removed, and the green is when it was first invoiced. The light blue or kind of purple bar across is where the resident would have the ability to make payments throughout the whole period of, from when it was taken down to when and before the levy is heard before the city council and then when it is sent to Hennepin County. So, there's, depending again on the timing of when the tree is removed, and most Emerald Ash Bore trees are removed over the winter months. Dave could comment on this, but it was a learning process for me, is that they do it during the winter months to keep the larvae from spreading?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
Mayor, City Council, so it's still best practice to do that work in the winter when the insects are dormant. And it's contrary to the way we used to manage elm trees, which I think sometimes leaves a confusion. Elm trees weren't visibly infected until they leafed out in the spring, and we were highly motivated to get those down and sanitize and dispose of properly before the insects that feed on the elm trees that vector around the fungus could move it to the next tree. So, managing Emerald Ash Bore is completely different in that regard. So, thank you for letting me talk about that.
Well, you taught me something new. And then, you guys can talk about this one.
Yeah, so this is kind of my level of expertise over the last 15 years, mostly doing a lot of tree inspections and marking trees before my current position. So, everybody's kind of wondering sometimes when they have their tree marked by me or one of my associates. Who called? Why are you here? You know, what did I do to deserve this? Sometimes that's, it's the anonymous call that, you know, I think my neighbor has something in the backyard that needs to be marked. Sometimes people call for their own properties. A lot of times, that is the case, and they're noticing that the tree is starting to die back. You know, and we do our best to go out and smooth those situations over. Certainly, if it's a diseased tree issue, Dutch elm disease is what primarily I did. My first years being here was Dutch elm disease and oak wilt. And since moved to Emerald Ash Bore. So, at the time when I arrive at the scene, I'll knock on the front door, see if anybody's home. Usually make contact with whoever was calling in the notice. If I'm able to gain access to a backyard or such, that would be indicated by the property owner. I wouldn't enter the property without essentially trying to make contact with them first. If the tree does in fact have a disease, I would measure it and mark it with spray paint so that we can identify it in the future, that it's been marked and identified. At that time, I'm able to go off of what our city contract disease removal price sheet gives for the tree removal. So, on the notice that I can either leave with the homeowner in person when I make contact or leave it on the door, that will establish what that homeowner can remove the tree for under our city contract price. If they would like to do it themselves, we're able to connect them with who best to dispose it with. We want to make sure that it's properly disposed of. Or if they are willing to just use the contractor of their own choice. At that time, we give them, on the notice that says, please call within three days, so that we can kind of gauge the involvement of the homeowner if they're willing to take action on this, if we need to, you know, maybe have a little further discussion. Sometimes people just need the time to, you know, get other bids and get other estimates on what that removal price would be. With Emerald Ash Bore, we're, like you said, the process is a little bit differently administered in the wintertime because the timeframe isn't quite so rushed. The sanitation actions that need to be done can happen throughout the wintertime. So, while it's, you know, ideally, we would like people to remove their trees within 30 days. We know that that's not always convenient and not necessary as well. So, as long as it's removed before the period when the wood would be a danger in the spring. After that point, we allow, if they do choose to use our contractor, we allow our contractor to establish the timeline that they're able to get to it. We try to work within that month timeframe as best we can. If the property owner decides to have their own contractor remove it, they're removing it themselves, we just request that they let us know when that's going to happen, once the tree is removed as well. I will perform a reinspection or one of our tree inspectors to verify that the tree is in fact removed, that the wood has been hauled away and disposed of properly. And then, at that point, it goes on to the billing process.
Do you want me to take this one?
Sure.
Our goal, yeah, our goal overall was to plant at least one for one for every tree that was removed on city property, whether it's park, a building, a traffic median island or a streetscape. When possible, we try and get in ahead of time to plant. Not always do we have room to do that, so once in a while, we have to go in and cut down some trees ahead of time to make room. And sometimes, and in some cases, we have had the infestation get big enough where we weren't able to be very surgical about that. Bryant Park was one of those where midway through the winter, we noticed that, wow, all these trees look really heavily infested now when they didn't before. So, we, during this, have had instances where we've had to take down more trees than we wanted to, making a bigger impact. You know, the whole idea of us doing the preemptive stuff was to get, just to do it little by little, so it lessened the blow, if you will. That didn't always work, and we know that.
Another instance of that that I always kind of use to gauge people is at the Lyndale Avenue Cemetery. We had a similar sort of experience where early October, I went out to inspect all the trees, you know, found, I believe it was maybe a dozen trees that, you know, were visibly being attacked by woodpeckers. Had the kind of telltale sign of it. You know, it was a big number to take out of there at once. But, well, all right, well, it's good that we're not taking them all at once. We, you know, hopefully, these next ones, we can gauge out the next year. And then, the attendant that works at the cemetery let me know about three weeks later. He said, I think there's a few more out there. Before the contractor gets here, would you like to mark those so we can get them at the same time? And sure enough, just in the process of that three-week timeframe, the woodpeckers had made evident many more trees that were actually infested. And that's trees that were infested, obviously, when I was there three weeks prior, but was not as visibly evident. So, sometimes it's just that quick that you find that you're more infested than you thought.
And it's really sensitive to have better-looking trees in your parks than the ones that you're marking in people's private property. We know that, so. I mentioned earlier that we do not do replanting right-of-adjacent to private property. I'll touch on the tree sale, which is really happening this week for Arbor Day. That tree sale's gotten probably 4,000 trees out to residents to plant on private property ahead of EAB, but it still continues with EAB and even more. So, this was a record year at 355 trees. Last year was a second-place year at 277, so the interest in that program is picking up, if anything. It's important to know that the trees that we get for that tree sale are only available in the spring bare root. And so, to our last point, if we do explore options to provide a lower note-cost tree to residents to replace trees lost through EAB or other, we'd have to go about that somehow in the spring. We wouldn't be able to automatically give them a tree at any time of the year. They would, it would have to be a voucher and some process where we'd distribute those trees the following spring, if you will. I think that's what we needed to communicate on that slide as well, too.
Yep, so at this point, we'll stand for questions.
Counsel, any questions on the presentation? Councilmember Lohman?
Thank you, Mayor. I noticed that in the equity piece, that there was a discussion with respect to the concentration of trees in the northeast portion of the city. And I do know that when we've looked at other, you know, for example, billing, that type of thing, just because of the homes being concentrated there or just the density just being different than if you kind of move further west to the city. You know, so I just wanted to see how much that plays a role in this, or are we really seeing an overall, you know, if we say from, you know, Portland Avenue kind of going east, is there just a higher number of concentration of those numbers there? It's not, you know, hopefully, you understand what I'm asking here, because as I'm looking at this thing, I'm like, it's what I'm seeing, the truth, you know, in terms of there's just more concentration there.
Yeah, I think the biggest difference... Yeah, I think the, I think the biggest difference in concentration, too, is I honestly, I think there's a higher concentration that will be as we move west from that portion of Portland. There's a fairly regular and very even, just like the neighborhoods are, are very evenly distributed. There was a lot more of a, a response to Dutch elm disease replanting. So I think that there, that's part of why the, maybe the percentage is a little bit lower, is that they were kind of the take rate on maybe replanting. Whereas if you move like further west in the city, you know, after Penn Avenue, you know, all the way up Normandale, you're going to start to see the newer developing neighborhoods that were just planted right off the bat with green ash trees. And it was sort of a preferred panacea species at the time. They thought, well, there's nothing that's going to take these out. So the, I think there was a bigger push to actually have more ash trees in some of those neighborhoods. And that's, and that's kind of why I was really glad that we had that second map that sort of shows off like what our city removals has, because I would say that that more closely matches where the distribution of ash trees probably is. There's definitely some on the farther east, or excuse me, farther west end of the, of the city, but it's just as a percentage, I'd say, lower.
Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. It was super helpful. I just have a really quick question. I know Hennepin County does their Healthy Tree Canopy Grants, and I'm just curious if we are, have we applied for that in the past?
I think if we've done in the past. We, we have one Healthy Tree Canopy Grant that we're working on now. We have applied for and received a DNR grant. That helped us with the initial response. That was a bonding grant that was available in 2016. And that was kind of the end of that cycle. We took advantage of that. So we've done some grants for this. There's a, there's a multitude of them out there, we know that.
Yeah. I mean, we've definitely been looking at sort of the options for grant funding. Obviously, there's more programs coming down the line, certainly with the, Hennepin County Grant tends to be a little bit more public-centered. And so sort of the administration of that, so, you know, toot our own horn, we do a pretty good job replanting our, our city trees. And what I would really jump at is, is grant opportunities that we can extend to private properties and administer better, you know. I think, and I think that's the biggest drawback in some of those programs, is how do you administer to that many properties and do the follow-up paperwork and stuff to justify that.
Thank you.
Yeah. Councilmember, Councilmember DeLisandro?
Thank you. Just a quick comment on, on your point, Councilmember Carter. If, if Hennepin would give you money to, to spend it on our public trees, maybe we could move that money over to the private program or something to that effect, I'm wondering. But I, I, I'm very interested in the, in the program that makes it easy for people to get replacement trees. You'll be hearing from me because I have a woodpecker-infested ash tree that needs to come down this winter, which is really sad for me. I planted a bur oak with the idea that it would last a little bit longer, and it's not going to last, unfortunately, so.
It's tough to get them established, once you get them established.
Yeah, yeah, it's hard. It really is. I feel bad, too, because there's at least three, like squirrel nests up in there. Anyway, not for me to talk. My question is, I, I know that there are, there are folks that believe that we have not planted as many trees as we've taken down. And when I, when I did the math, I felt like we were about one to one, but I'm wondering if that gap is in that private area where we've had to take them down from those private areas, and the private property owner has not yet planted a tree for whatever reason. Is that, number one, is that correct? And if so, can you estimate how many trees that might be?
Mayor, Councilmember DeLisandro, I can estimate. What I, what we don't know is how many people instantly replace their lost ash tree with their own tree. We do know that through the tree sale, we're selling a lot of trees, and we hope they're going to that. Certainly, over the life of the tree sale, we've more than doubled the number of trees that we've gotten out into the public for private planting over what we've taken out, which is thirteen hundred or so. I think one area of confusion is, is that we take down a lot of Boulevard ash trees that are planted on, in front of private property. And in general, Boulevard trees are not a program that Bloomington has. We don't reestablish them, and in fact, they're not allowed, generally speaking, to be planted up on the right-of-way. If it's to be planted, it's advised to be fifteen feet or so back to get it out of the Though those trees, when they are on the right-of-way, the ordinance says that it's the, the care and the responsibility is of the adjacent property owner. As soon as they become diseased or infested with insects, it's city that takes care of it. We take responsibility. Or in storm situations, or if they become hazardous, the city steps in and takes care of them then. So there is some confusion there on what our program is all about. Does that help?
I, it does. Thanks. Appreciate it.
I would also say, as the main person that's been placing the planted trees back in the parks, too, that, that's also the difficulty, too, a lot of times is, I would say in general, we've been putting more trees back into the parks than we have been taking out of them. So part of those numbers that have been coming off the boulevards have also been going into park property and such, too. So sometimes it's, it's a judgment call to, to place them appropriately so they will be in the right place and, and not crowded, not a, a problem in the future.
Councilmember Muah?
Thank you. Question about the replanting. Can you talk through what we do for diversity of trees, given that we've gone through Dutch elm disease, oak wilt, and now Emerald Ash Bore? Just looking into the future, how we don't run into another tree pandemic?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, we've, was it twenty-four different species this year? So just in the last two weeks, we actually did a, a big planting of trees that we weren't able to get planted last fall due to the unfortunate early snowfall that we got. So we had some trees that were left over from a gravel bed. We have just a, a great representation of, of trees at St. Bonaventure now around that field. What I like to do, I mean, I, my planting style is, is not every other or whatever. I like to mix it up as much as possible. I think just at St. Bonaventure, there's at least ten different species, just in that thirty-eight trees that we planted. So that is, that is the primary way that we're going to achieve a, a healthier future for us. And basically, we're continuing to branch out into different species as well. So we're doing some, some pilot trees. Yeah, I can't resist the fun when it's branching out, so. You know, and, and trying out some species that are also going to be climate-adapted more to Zone Five and things that some other cities are also trying, like St. Paul, pecan, hickory, things that are native, but maybe a little further south than we're used to here.
And then, wh- when we talk about the, the pricing for the city, Ledwin, can you share what we are competitively with the private sector? My, my concern here is that we're pushing people to utilize, or we're kind of cornering the market. So just, can you explain where we are at competitively with the private market? And then also, what if a homeowner chooses not to do anything about the tree? What does the city do at that point?
We have the current bid information.
No. I don't want to.
I could start out, or I would even...
I mean, it, it just currently went out for RFP, and it was more than a sixty percent increase on costs on, and we, the, the same, the lowest bidder that we had last year is still the lowest bidder, but it is a sixty percent increase in prices, just because there's such an abundance of trees being disposed of. The cost to dispose has increased for those vendors. So, I mean, we are taking competitive bids, and the lowest bid would be awarded. A resident has their opportunity to utilize the city's contract or, or shop around, and we're not forcing them to take our, our proposal. If they can find a wonderful, cheaper bid, I, I hope they take that.
And I'd just like to reinforce that as the person that's generally been doing that over the last fifteen years, is that what I, I really appreciate our system in having that, that bid price available to the homeowner. Prior to working for the City of Bloomington, I worked for the City of Eagan, and my job was basically just to mark the tree and require that it be removed. And since coming here, I've come to realize that that's a great asset to at least, a lot of times, get homeowners' foot in the door of the process. I think there's a lot of people that are overwhelmed by the, the prospect of, of going through that and having to find a contractor. And in fact, most of the time, what I do is I use that contracted bid and say, look, this is, this is what our contractor can do it for. I think this is a great bargaining chip to go to other contractors, in fact, and, and to use that bid to see if they'll beat it. So I, I fully use it to the best of my ability to, to help the homeowner out. And if it's required, I think that's a great opportunity for them to utilize our payment program as well.
Also, if there are no other questions, we can move on to the public hearing on this item. Very good. Thank you much for the presentation. Greatly appreciated. Item four point three is a public hearing regarding our tree assessment levy plans, and I will open the public hearing now and ask if there's anyone in the council chambers who wishes to speak to this. Anyone wishing to speak to item four point three? Mr. Sable, anyone on the phone?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, no one on the phone?
Last call in the council chambers? No one coming forward, counsel. I'd look for a motion to close the public hearing on item four point three. Motion by Councilmember DeLisandro, second by Councilmember Carter, to close the public hearing on item four point three. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero, closing the public hearing. Counsel, discussion on this, we talked about this at length, I think, at the, the previous meeting when we first brought this forward and staff first brought this forward. I like the, I like the proposal that staff has brought forward. And it's interesting, it kind of goes back to my earlier statements about, you know, policies and, and operations that kind of reflect the values of our community. And I think this shows that we know full well that where the trees are coming out, the cost of the trees and the cost burden on a lot of homeowners with this, and to have an opportunity, an option for a ten-year levy period to, to spread out the cost, I think is, it's a bit more equitable, and it, it certainly helps out a number of, of our residents. Because as I said, we know full well, and we've all heard stories about twenty thousand-dollar tree removals, and because this is, the costs we're seeing are per tree, and it's very often, very typical, it's not one tree in the yard coming out. So I like the, I like the proposal brought forward by staff. I, I think it's, it makes sense, it's manageable, I think it's equitable, and, and I think it's a, it's a good step forward for the city. Councilmember Carter?
I just wanted to echo, I agree. I also wanted to voice my support for the low- or no-cost replacement trees to residents who have had theirs removed, or even, you know, kind of reserved vouchers for those residents for the tree sale. I myself had one of our trees removed and so need to replace, and I was a little too late to the tree sale, and I didn't get one. And so I think just having those vouchers available for people when the tree sale is coming around would be really helpful.
Absolutely agree, councilmember. Thank you for that. Counsel, anything else? Councilmember Muah?
Thank you, Mayor. I think my biggest concern with this as a whole is that I don't want the city to become a tree removal contractor or be acting as a bank. So I would love to be able to see something come back in a couple of years so, so that we can fully understand what the impact of this is like, to ensure that we are not inadvertently impacting the private sector and allowing businesses to do their business, and that homeowners aren't taking advantage of, you know, raising interest rates or that kind of thing and using the city as a bank and that kind of thing. So I would like to see some follow-up in the future to understand where we're, we're trending with those things.
Could we look for a twelve- and twenty-four-month update on where we stand on all this? Very good, thank you. Good, good suggestion, Councilmember Muah, thank you. Counsel, if there's no more commentary on this, I would look for a motion on item four point three this evening. Councilmember DeLisandro?
Yeah, I, I actually had the opposite thought to Councilmember Muah's, and I didn't think about it as a bank thing as much as I thought about it as a, a nice way for folks who may have, may, may have homes, may not be able to take out a conventional loan, but can get this done, which is better for the environment, better for our, for our community. So I kind of took the opposite tack, but I understand the, the point there, and I think it would be good for us to take a look at it. Okay, with that, I'd love to make this motion. So what am I doing here? I am making the motion to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter eighteen and Appendix A of the Bloomington City Code related to trimming, treatment, or removal of trees and administrative assessments therefore.
Motion by Councilmember DeLisandro, second by Councilmember Carter, to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter eighteen and Appendix A of the Bloomington Code regarding, related to the trimming, treatment, and removal of trees. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Councilmember DeLisandro?
I am making a motion to adopt a resolution directing summary publication of an ordinance amending Chapter eighteen and Appendix A of the Bloomington City Code related to trimming, treatment, or removal of trees and administrative assessments therefore.
Motion by Councilmember DeLisandro, second by Councilmember Carter, for summary publication of item four point three. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero on summary publication. Thank you very much, and thanks for the discussion on this, counsel. I think this is, we, we heard about this, we heard county, community concerns about this and the impact of the Emerald Ash Bore, the cost of a tree removal, and I think this is a good step forward just to help folks, as Councilmember DeLisandro said, both financially but environmentally as well, to get these trees out when we can to try and at least slow down the Emerald Ash Bore spread and get the new trees planted and, and growing as quickly as possible. So thank you for it. Thanks, thanks for your work, staff, on this. Well done. With that, we'll move on to item five, our organizational business this evening. And item five point one is our continuing discussion of city code amendments and the comprehensive plan text amendments for single and two-family residential standards. We have Erica Coleman, our HRA Administrator, Nick Johnson, our senior planner, to bring this forward with us this evening and continue this discussion, as I said. Good evening to both of you, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. How are you this evening? Good. So I am here to talk about the overall housing ecosystem, which I'm kind of excited about, so, you know, bear with me if I nerd out, what our role is and what is the role of the HRA as we work together with partners to achieve affordability, as well as provide access to the opportunity, which is the built environment and the human-centered approach. As this is a discussion, I do welcome questions and points of clarification as I move through my ten slides before my colleagues from planning speak about the proposed ordinance. So with that, when I started in 2020, I did hear and receive clear direction from the city council, the HRA board, and through the community engagement efforts during various plans initiatives to continue with rental housing opportunities and to increase access to opportunities in affordable homeownership. The city council approved the recommendations to focus the HRA on service coordination, expanding housing stability assistance, and offering pathways to homeownership, including encouragement, encouraging development of missing middle housing through the HRA import authority assessment that was completed in 2022. So what is the housing ecosystem? The housing ecosystem is a complex interconnected network of cause and effect driven by economic, political, regulatory, and social forces, determining the built environment of housing types and livability. And so with that, when one piece of the ecosystem isn't working, it affects the rest. The ecosystem allows the community to see the full housing and homelessness system, as well as the separate parts and how they relate to each other. It is one part of a multi-step process in creating a culture of continuous improvement. There are five main areas of the housing ecosystem. There are five main areas of the housing ecosystem. Big external forces and current conditions refer to broader areas of political, economic, and the market. Areas that we all know and feel but have many components outside of local control. Plans, projects, and initiatives are the action models that guide productivity, purpose, and dictate outcomes specific to whatever lens is applied in constructing the plans, policies, and initiatives, which can be national, regional, local, or otherwise. Actors and tools are those, such as local government, using what is in their wheelhouse of influence and most importantly, control. And all of these components determine the types of housing available, affordable to whom, and where the housing is physically located. So, this handout was provided in the agenda packet and it's quite detailed. The visual is from the Minnesota Governor's Task Force on Housing that was convened in 2018 to help guide decisions and funding opportunities for needs of Minnesotans. More specifically, I am drawing your eyes to the actors and tools section and specifically where local control is. Within the vast and complex housing ecosystem is zoning and land use. This is a small portion, but it's the portion we as a city have most control. The city is an actor. The tools are planning. Bless you. Land use and zoning, as well as code enforcement permitting and rental licensing. This is in addition to the potential sources of funding directly connected to ownership opportunities. I'd like to mention that this, that within this control was the Opportunity Housing Ordinance. A zoning ordinance that allows for incentives in the creation and preservation of rental and ownership housing of 20 units or more. So the housing market is a complex system. And its overall outcomes, who finds a home at a price they can afford, in a place they want to be, are going to largely be shaped by ecology of causes and effects. So using data from our assessing division and the most recent assessing report in Bloomington in the last five years, we've gone from 14,797 single-family detached homes under $300,000 to 3,870 single-family homes, affordable at $300,000 or less. The very affordable ranges have pretty much disappeared. In 2019, there were 1,832 homes under $200,000, now down to 86 this year. To put this in perspective, we have about 21,000 single-family detached homes in the city. So we went from about 70% of our homes under $300,000 five years ago to about 18% today. The median Bloomington household income is around $80,500, which is less than 80% area median income currently for the region, which is a little over $89,000. What this means in homeownership opportunity numbers is that the median income for the city of Bloomington allows for a household to afford a home priced at $280,000. Or less, as today's current interest rates of a little bit more than 6%. So as the interest rates are rising, the affordability of what the principal and interest on a mortgage, not including taxes, not including any additional assistance that somebody might get, not including homeowner association fees if it's a townhome or a condo, just principal and interest. An 80% AMI median household in Bloomington should be able to afford $280,000. So, using data from the Minneapolis Association of Realtors, since 2019, we have seen an overall increase in purchase price of single-family homes on the market in Bloomington. In 2019, the median purchase price was $296,148, an affordable price in the market to an 80% median income household. Compared to 2022, which was $375,000, which is affordable to a household at 115% to 120%. There is becoming an issue in supply and demand, therefore, with supply decreasing, demand increases, and with that, price of what the market will bear. Because the real estate market is what an able, willing buyer is willing to pay. Able, willing buyers are willing to pay $375,000 as of last year in Bloomington. The majority of them were not 80% AMI buyers, they were over that. So, overall, the regional baseline of affordability at 80% AMI does not compute for Bloomington. In terms of median household income, nor median home purchase price. There is a loss in affordability and supply and the trend will continue without local action. Part of the housing ecosystem is plans, policies, and initiatives. These can be national, statewide, regional, local, and even neighborhood-based. Usually plans, policies, initiatives are all of the above. Specifically to Bloomington, we use them to guide our day-to-day work, direction of resiliency and growth, and overall future planning. Here I've provided specific plans, policies, and initiatives by year. The reason for these specific ones is because each of them has tiebacks and action items related to housing and more specifically addressing homeownership opportunities, access to them, and equitable steps to take in creating them. I'm calling attention to the fair housing policy and the comprehensive plan because these are required at a regional and national level. And they are directly tied to the city and HRA for funding for action steps. So, the fair housing policy, we just celebrated Fair Housing Month, which April is National Fair Housing Month. It was the 55th anniversary of the passage of the Fair Housing Act of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, the act that was passed after the long, hot summer. The city council for Bloomington adopted a fair housing policy in August of 2018. This was done because it was required by HUD for us to have one. In 2015, the affirmatively furthering fair housing rule was provided by HUD. In 2016, an analysis of impediments to housing was completed on a regional level through our involvement with the Fair Housing Implementation Council, or better known as the FIC. The analysis provided that zoning restrictions in single-family housing at the community level has an impact and has a higher probability of barriers to housing affordability opportunities for protected characteristics. Bloomington adopted this policy and in it stated that it would take meaningful action to overcome historic lack of access to opportunity in housing and specifically would review its housing periodically to examine the affordability of both rental and ownership to inform future city actions, review its municipal code periodically with specific focus on ordinances related to zoning, building, and occupancy standards to identify any potential for disparate impact or treatment, that city planning functions and development review will consider housing issues, including whether potential projects may perpetuate segregation or lead to displacement of protected classes, and review the recommendations from the analysis for potential integration into city planning documents, including the Consolidated Plan, the Comprehensive Plan, and other related documents. Additionally, the city and the HRA certify that we are taking meaningful action steps every year. We do so by receiving the Community Development Block Grant and our Housing Choice voucher funds. And we have to renew those contracts every single year and every single year we have to sign off on certifications that we are doing these things. In both, we must provide goals, steps, and outcomes as to how we are upholding this requirement and why we continue to deserve the federal funds that we receive and use to create housing and homeownership opportunities. So, we have our comprehensive plan. State law encourages, but cities within the seven-county metro are required to adopt a comprehensive plan, which is a 20-year plan but updated every 10 years. The comprehensive plan sets forth vision and goals for the city's future, guides development and zoning decisions, and sets priorities for public investment. So in 2016, there was a data book on Bloomington and its growth. In 2017 was a comprehensive housing analysis. In 2018 was the fair housing policy. And 2019 was our comprehensive plan update approval, as well as the passage of our Opportunity Housing Ordinance. The data gathering, engagement, assessment of where Bloomington was and where we are headed was all happening at the same time and that information was used to inform our comprehensive plan update. At the direction of city council that instructed staff to review, analyze, and recommend amendments to zoning to reduce barriers to creation of non-traditional housing types, which is basically to get creative with the tools in our toolbox within our realm of control, zoning and land use. A direct charge of Bloomington in forward 2040, taking shape together, was to foster affordability, which is providing affordable housing choices that help build a stable, well-balanced, economically resilient community. Many variables affect the cost of housing, including unit size, age, location, and level of amenities. Overall, supply and demand directly influence fluctuations in the housing cost. So how do we reach affordability? And what does that mean? Well, first, I'm showing a chart of costs to the left, which is a simple breakdown of development of a single-family home in Bloomington under the current ordinance and then that of the proposed ordinance. I want to note two things. One, in the published agenda item for this slide, the math was wrong, in case you didn't catch it. That is corrected on this slide in front of you. And two, this information is based on the HRA buying and selling land for housing opportunities development. The HRA has four years purchased property that have had a substandard structure on it, removed the structure, and ready the lot for redevelopment and sale. In the last three years, a lot has not been priced at less than $120,000, which is in most instances, a break-even number for the HRA. But in a few, but a few are less than the money put into the parcel at $120,000. So what that means is we were working with a seller that voluntarily sells their home to the HRA. Usually it has code violations or different things on it, but it's a substandard property usually. We do tear the home down, we have to pull a permit, we have to follow the process that anybody would have to follow, we have to have the building official inspected and sign off on it. We have the site cleared and we have the site readied for redevelopment. That usually is around $120,000 break-in even, but it has been less than what we have put into the property at times. Including, when we want to encourage more affordable homeownership opportunities, we will write that lot down to a dollar. Working with mission-based organizations. So already, that's $120,000 of subsidy that's going to help create an affordable, $121, $120,001 going to create affordability. So, with that being a break-even, there's specific, there is specific to the statutory authority of the HRA, which is to remedy the shortage of housing for low and moderate-income households in situations that require government participation and/or subsidy. That is what we are doing as the HRA. So under the current ordinance, land costs would be around $120,000. In most cases, in Bloomington, more than this. Then constructing a single-family home is around $350,000. That is a total development cost of $470,000. This number includes all materials, labor, and fees. Now looking at the proposed ordinance, land costs could be less than the current and the construction costs would be the same considering redevelopment of the same size and type of single-family home. All the proposed are good-quality homes due to our requirements and enforcement by our planning division that promotes health and safety and harmonious land use through zoning ordinance and our building inspections division that ensures compliance with building codes for safety. So I want to be clear, what the HRA is doing or working with partners to provide affordable homeownership does not lessen the quality of the constructed structure. It is of the same quality. To target a homebuyer mortgage of $200,000, so I'm on the sources chart now, which in today's numbers is affordable for an 80% AMI household and would even be affordable to a 50% AMI household, it will take the work of multiple partners, as that is how affordability is achieved. So here I show how the costs of, to construct a home are coming from state, regional, county, and local sources. This is what it takes when constructing rental or ownership housing that is affordable. Collaboration of multiple actors and tools, homeownership affordability and access, to achieve homeownership affordability and access. Providing for smaller lots that would cost less would allow for the city and/or the HRA funds to go further in increasing supply and providing affordability opportunities in homeownership. So where we would do maybe one or two properties, we could possibly do two to four properties instead of just doing one or two. Mortgage affordability is available to the end homebuyer and the changes being proposed are intended to lower project costs, which allow more efficient use of the money, of the many sources coming in, so many of these types of projects can get done. So, where does the homebuyer come from? Right? We're targeting a $200,000 mortgage, who are the homebuyers? Where do they come from? Well, the city and the HRA have tools that are working together to create and reach targeted homebuyers. For instance, education. We have our Journey to Homeownership and Homestretch courses, which are free courses offered on a regular basis here at Center for the Arts through partnership with Project for Pride and Living, who is a mission-based organization focused on job training and homeownership opportunities. We the Housing Choice Voucher Homeownership Program. This was approved by the HRA Board, is included in the process identified for HUD for implementation. But this allows for the education and opportunity for current Housing Choice voucher renters to become homeowners here in Bloomington after securing mortgage financing and finding a home. So those things have to be available and they have to be able to access them. Mortgage financing, finding a home on their own. Part of that program is we do not help them find that home. Rental homes for future homebuyers. This is the HRA's five-year program for households to rent a home while attending homebuyer education, financial education, and escrowing money towards a down payment on a home. Down payment assistance. The city council approved the use of American Rescue Plan Act dollars for a pilot down payment assistance program. That requires homebuyer education, one-to-one financial education, and a max of 80% area median income to use on the purchase of a home in Bloomington. Development gap assistance. Providing funding for the creation and/or rehabilitation of housing for affordable homeownership, whether through the city or the HRA, by mission-based organizations. With both down payment assistance and development gap assistance, deed-restricted homeownership is a mechanism for preserving the long-term affordability of the units. Whose price was reduced to below-market levels through a government or philanthropic subsidy, because that's how we achieve affordability, inclusionary zoning, and/or affordability incentive. Additionally, when it comes to affordability, for those that have been historically marginalized or specifically excluded due to funding restrictions, zoning restrictions, restrictive deed covenants or actions by individuals, there are opportunities to work towards undoing those harms. Funding or mortgages being one of the biggest barriers. There are now the use of special-purpose credit programs. These were passed by Congress in the 1970s under the Equal Credit Opportunity Act. They provided for a tailored way to meet special social needs and benefit economically disadvantaged groups, including groups that share a common characteristic such as race, national origin, or gender. Now, in 2023, these programs, special-purpose credit, which can be mortgages, down payment assistance, or other special-purpose programs, are becoming more of a topic because in December of 2021, HUD provided a legal opinion that this type of program does not violate fair housing. From the 70s till 2021, it was an understanding that being able to right a wrong through government practices and policies violated a different law. HUD and the Consumer Finance Protection Bureau have come together and they both agree now, this does not violate fair housing. And it is the right step to take. This is the ability to specifically target specific populations. This type of program and model is being explored for creation by Twin Cities Habitat for Humanity. Twin Cities Habitat for Humanity offers mortgage products as well as Build Wealth Minnesota, another mission-based organization focused another mission-based organization focused on increasing homeownership opportunities for those that have barriers. So with the proposal of what does the housing cost and sources look like, and who would be able to purchase these homes, I just named off our partners. And that's just a few of them. I also named off the different programs and initiatives we already have and are doing, and how we would marry them together. And in marrying all of these things, the collaboration on the supply side to create affordable homeownership opportunities in the built environment, and on the human-centered side of education, assistance, and specific programming to have a direct pool of homebuyers is how we create and serve for homeownership affordability. What this means is that while there is local control on how land use happens and zoning dictating what can and cannot be, to achieve desired outcomes, it takes leadership, creativity, and funding support from state, regional, nonprofit, philanthropic, and sometimes private, and other entities such as housing authorities, working together. We, as a city, as the HRA, play the role of facilitator, convener, and coordinator to achieve the HRA's mission, which is to help provide affordable housing opportunities for those who are not adequately served by the marketplace, to coordinate the city's efforts to preserve existing neighborhoods, and promote development and redevelopment that enhance Bloomington. So the main categories of housing interventions, prevention, diversion, temporary housing, and permanent housing, together, these interventions address housing stability and homelessness, instability and homelessness. However, it is important to note that this is not a linear process. A household may teeter on the edge of housing instability and homelessness for a long time. And some households who move from homelessness to housing stability may return one or even multiple times. Seeing the full system allows the community to better understand such patterns and identify areas for intervention. While this is the housing continuum from a human-centered standpoint, showing that any person, regardless of age, race, gender, or other characteristics, can be at any place on this cyclical continuum at any point in their life, the built environment of housing directly overlays with this continuum and is fully impacted by single- and two-family zoning standards. So you might be wondering how. So I'll let you know. Homelessness, emergency shelter, and transitional housing, the first three, encompass trusted independent organizations such as MACV, Simpson Housing, and Cornerstone, which work with domestic violence survivors. Community housing, which is the fourth one, encompasses group homes for differently abled, neurodiverse, as well as senior housing facilities, just to name a few. Next, we have affordable rental. This is multifamily and single- and two-family homes, which allow for larger households that may be multi-generational or have increased dependents, because we all know that increased dependents do not mean higher income. Just mean more mouths to feed. Those also encompass opportunities for our first responders, firefighters and police, as well as public school staff, teachers, and support staff working with children every day in this community. Or those in our bustling hospitality industry that would also like to live here and own a home. Or affordable rental. Affordable homeownership encompasses the mission and work of organizations such as the HRA, West Hennepin Affordable Housing Land Trust, Habitat for Humanity, and Project for Pride and Living, all of which have completed rehabilitation and redevelopment in the city of Bloomington and desire to continue to do so. It includes the opportunity for households and professions that I named in the affordable rental space. Market value rental encompasses our opportunity housing ordinance and other developments, but also our ability to provide rental assistance programs. And market value home could be our sustainability efforts, down payment assistance, or even our home improvement loans, as well as the regular cycle of housing that could provide for naturally occurring affordable homeownership opportunities with the size and age of housing. So for instance, using the City of Bloomington Down Payment Assistance Program that this council approved and trusted staff to go forward and implement, a BIPOC homebuyer who is at 50% area median income was able to purchase a home in Bloomington. That home, under the current ordinance, would not be allowed to be built today. That home, built in 1948, is 600 square feet, one bedroom, one bathroom, two-car detached garage on a 7,800-square-foot lot. This house was on the open market at $200,000 and is one of the 86 properties left that are valued at $200,000 or less in Bloomington. An example of naturally occurring affordable homeownership. In the 50s, zoning was changed in Bloomington to require bigger lots. This is during after a boom in population, the use of the GI Bill for World War II veterans to purchase housing, but that very tool was not allowed to be used for Black veterans to purchase, and racially restrictive language in deeds prohibiting purchase by people of other races. Ownership is important in that it builds individual wealth, which is a very big deal. So here are my key points. The housing ecosystem is vast and complex. However, most impactful local control is through zoning and land use. There is a loss in affordability and supply, and the trend will continue without local action. Collaboration of multiple actors and tools is how affordability and homeownership is achieved, and single- and two-family zoning directly impacts the whole housing continuum, from homelessness to homeownership. So when you layer the benefits of homeownership on top of the disparity in homeownership in Bloomington, the need for creative solutions becomes apparent. In 2022, Bloomington homeownership rate was 66%. Of the total homeownership rates among white residents was about 74%. That percentage drops off drastically as you look at other races and ethnicities. And about 27% of Black or African-American residents own their homes in Bloomington. The homeownership gap in Bloomington between white households and all households of color is 32.6%. This gap is worse than the state of Minnesota, which is at 30.9%, and the United States as a whole, which is at 26.2%. Our mission, as identified in Bloomington tomorrow together, is to cultivate an enduring and remarkable community where people want to be. It's great to want to be somewhere. But can people who want to be here be here? Our role through local control, such as zoning, and through the HRA and various partnerships is to do just that, to cultivate an enduring and remarkable community where people can be. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. Council questions? Councilmember Carter and then Councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. So, Ms. Coleman, thank you for the very thorough presentation. I know for me, it was really helpful to better understand just kind of the bigger picture and how what we're talking about tonight aligns to the bigger picture and the broader ecosystem of housing. So I am, in general, mostly supportive of the changes that staff are proposing. The one thing that I continue to struggle with and I'm trying to keep an open mind is the affordability piece, and I appreciate that you said that it takes collaboration of multiple actors and tools to really get to affordability, which you clearly demonstrated, right, with the partnerships? So yesterday I was kind of, you know, doing the Google and the literature review and trying to figure out, like, what does the research say? And there are kind of mixed outcomes in terms of broad affordability, that whenever you kind of do this broad upzoning, that the market can then heat up and home values actually increase. And we know that Bloomington is a community with many low-income residents, right? And so how, I mean, I guess I'm just hoping that you can speak to kind of the mixed information that is in the literature in terms of how upzoning can improve affordability. I get it as it relates to city-owned properties and city partnerships, but I guess for the broader market, I mean, we already are hearing from residents all the time about their home values increasing and how they're asking us how they're going to afford to stay in Bloomington, right? And so I guess I just want to put that question out there and would love to hear any kind of thoughts or more of your expertise and to help us kind of understand that or help me understand that piece.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, Councilmember Carter, members of the council. So one of the things that come into play is that Bloomington is predominantly built-out city. So with that, when you look at, as you said, upzoning, when you look at that, there would be a majority of the requirement to buy property and remove the house. Well, I just showed you that in 2022, it was $375,000. I have been in real estate for over 25 years. I'm not used to anybody wanting to pay $375,000 for a good house. So that's a house that does not need to be torn down, might need some upgrades, but not need to be torn down. It's not a tear-down. Tear it down at well over probably $100,000 once you tear it down. Then rebuild and rebuild at maybe $350,000 to rebuild. I'm not used to seeing that. That is not something that would be fiscally responsible. It wouldn't pencil out by any means. And anybody proposing to do that, so buy a house for $375,000, put $100,000 into it to take it down, that's $475,000. Now rebuild at $350,000. Wow, we're over $800,000. It doesn't, it doesn't make sense, and as someone who's been in real estate for 25 years, they will not be able to get the appraised value for what they put into that property. And so it does not, it just doesn't make sense, and it doesn't add up. And anybody that is not a mission-based organization that we can say, oh, pay them with a broad brush, they're in it to make money, they wouldn't do it either because they would not be making money. So, and they definitely wouldn't be getting any kind of support for, from philanthropic or government entities because they wouldn't qualify for that. So that's what I can provide you for that question. Does that answer your question?
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. So actually, I think to Councilmember Carter's question here with regards to that ecosystem, you talked about all of the players that help drive building housing, but the housing itself is a continuum. And one of the things that you see is that's driving up the values, as you mentioned, people that have the ability to pay $375,000 are buying those houses and driving up the prices. Is one of the reasons that they're buying that house is because there aren't $375,000 houses, there aren't $450,000 houses for them to buy? So they're having to go maybe settle on a house that they maybe a few years ago or a decade ago would not have settled on. Is that part of, from your experience in the real estate market, how a little bit of that continuum works?
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, members of the council. Somewhat, you know, we saw the market take off in 2020. And the, one of the reasons that we saw that is people were home. So in 2020, 2021, people were home. People were reassessing what was important and what was of value to them. So I can't say they were necessarily settling at $375,000. It's a big settlement. It's the big commitment to settle for that. But I can say one of the reasons that the homes are more likely $375,000 is because of lack of supply. The demand is there. People want to know what their payment is going to be. They want to be in one stable place. This discussion is about the housing ecosystem as a whole. So you can't talk about the housing ecosystem as a whole without talking about area median income that HUD says is for the region is not keeping up with what incomes actually are. So our area median income for Minnesota, for this region, Minneapolis-St. Paul, Bloomington, is $118,200. T minus 14 days, I'm waiting for HUD to come out with the new amount for 2023. I guarantee you it's going to go up just by a little bit. Who do we know that's really making $118,200 every year? They're not a part of this discussion at this point. So what we're looking at is that rents are going up. Evictions are on the rise. People don't know where they're, where they can be, and they would like to stay and put their roots down. They have children in Bloomington Public Schools, and they want to stay in Bloomington, so they want to purchase a home. If somebody can settle for $375,000, they're not an 80% AMI buyer.
Yeah, and I think to that point, that's my point, is that's the people that are buying some of those houses. And then you also made the point that supply isn't there. And from what I've seen in the marketplace recently, that's because people aren't selling their house. They're staying there, and they're making the improvements in that house. I mean, you see it in today's marketplace, new constructions down 43%. Residential remodelings up significantly and extremely strong. There, that, we are losing out on that supply because not only do we not build the houses at affordable rates, we aren't building houses that people can afford, that they want at higher price points. And what used to happen is, you know, someone would have that first house, and then they would, their family would grow, they would do better with their jobs, and they'd buy another house. It's exactly my story. I, I mean, and candidly, I bought a house that you can't legally build in Bloomington today. One-car garage was not legal anymore. Maybe we'll fix that, but, you know. And as we grew, I now have a, you know, two-story house, a few more bedrooms and that sort of thing. And one of my goals is, at some point, I'll get a smaller house. And we have so many people that are in those two-story houses that don't have a good place to go because there's not a lot of locations to build those smaller houses that would be very appropriate for seniors and things like that. And so that's what I was kind of getting at with regards to that whole continuum of housing in terms of price points, in terms of life, that frankly, we just, we got stuck. And there's just not enough supply in the marketplace, and we need to look at ways to bring supply from what I'm hearing from you.
Yes, and to your point, that is also in our comprehensive plan to focus on lifecycle housing. When you don't allow for diversity of housing types, you cannot focus on lifecycle housing. Lifecycle housing is just that, as Councilmember Nelson mentioned. You start out, you grow, you downsize, but you have the ability to stay within the same community to achieve all of that. Not only just affordability, but stability.
Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. The, the point about the literature, I appreciated because that's kind of a question I had as I was doing some reading. So I guess my gut kind of tells me when one city or even major, maybe even a larger city moves forward with allowing a greater variety of, say, owner-occupied housing options, I mean, that's not one city moving forward that isn't going to be enough to change the supply-demand calculus to drive down market-wide prices, I'm guessing. I mean, I could absolutely see why if one city does it, everybody's going to flood in because you've got a lot further to go before that market hits an equilibrium. So I know there's proposals floating around at the Minnesota Legislature. There have been for years. There's more and more people coming from all the time to just take this authority away from local governments completely, saying that because to this point, it seemed like local governments are all waiting for somebody else to take the lead and jump in and lead enough cities to move this direction to hit market equilibrium. So I guess the, the studies that, that look at single cities moving forward with these changes, do we know, is that a reliable gauge for what that would do with affordability, or is this a collective action problem that we need everybody to jump at once?
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you, Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, Senator Martin, members of the council. I, I don't think it's a collective action, and the reason being is Bloomington didn't take collective action when they moved their lot sizes to 11,000 square feet. So it's not a collective action to remedy it. However, Bloomington has the opportunity to be a leader in this space of following the plans, policies, and initiatives that has been put out. But in addition to that, there is the ITASKA project. The ITASKA project is a regional project that was done spearheaded by the Minneapolis Federal Reserve. I sat on the Housing Affordability Committee for that project for Bloomington, so Bloomington's represented and called out in that report. One of the actions that they did discuss and talk about and include in that final report was looking at zoning. Was looking at what you allow. And the reason being is zoning has historically been used as a restrictive component to be exclusive. So what is happening actually across the nation, some states, the legislature has successfully taken that away from local cities, local municipalities. But in a lot of states, they are talking at the local level about what does this look like? Why do we have single-family zoning when we have prevailing wage, minimum lot sizes, minimum households? Like, so why do we have all these layers? Like, so why do we have all these layers of things that are saying, you can't do this? So what I will say is I think that, one, Bloomington doing it does not just cause multiple people to rush in. One, we're predominantly built city. So we do have that on our side. Two, it, it has to take time and it's multiple things. It's multiple actors, it's multiple tools. It is not this one thing by itself that it takes. Three, there are plenty other cities that are already in discussions and already looking at this and some have already taken some actions, um, and some have not. So this is just, it's not going to cause a colle- a collect, it's not a collective thing happening, but it is one of the first cities to do something if you choose to go that route. And you will see other cities soon coming behind, but it's not because they are not in discussions about it or they're not already looking at it. Um, I just named the Itasca Project. This was also something that was in the Governor's Task Force on Housing in 2018. So it's been in discussions for a very long time, at least in our state. And it's also in, um, some of our, uh, information that I provided when I brought forward the down payment assistance proposal. It was in that report as well. To layer it with down payment assistance, you still have to allow for the opportunity for supply. So to answer your question, I don't think it's going to cause people to flock in and I don't think it's a wait for collaborative approach either. Bloomington is, and I love to say this, the fourth largest city in the state, the third largest city in the Twin Cities metro, the second largest city in Hennepin County, the most populous county in the state, but Bloomington is the largest suburb. And we have to rightfully hold our place in that.
Councilmember DeLisandro?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yeah, this has been a very substantive and much appreciated conversation. Thank you. Uh, you put a lot of work into making sure that not only, um, could we take your dozens of years of experience and, and understand it, but also that the folks that are watching could get a, a great primer. I felt like I went to school today and I mean that in a very good way. I do. So thank you for that. Um, uh, we're grateful that you're on our team. One of the things we, one of the things that I have been the most hung up on in my discussion around this has not actually been, um, so all the levers that you're trying to pull make sense to me. And I, um, I'm, I think, I think when I looked at the 12 items that were on the list, I was good with 10 to 12 of them, like 10 of 12. So I'm in really good shape in terms of what I hope we can deliver for you. I have been fixated though, on this conversation around single and two family lots. And yet we don't talk about the development of two family lots in this city. And I don't understand that, given the fact that we wouldn't have to do any of what we're doing tonight for, for, for folks to get houses on our lots, home, HRA owned or otherwise. They could be built right now and we could have families in those homes today. And, and so i- if you have a reason that you can share with me about why these same partners that you're involved in won't go with you right now, today and build two family lot, two family homes on these lots with you. If you can help me understand why there's a valid reason for that, I'd love to hear about it because it, it really is hard for me to understand.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor, Councilmember DeLisandro, members of the city council. So, um, in particular, uh, the HRA has 9030 Park, which we are under a memorandum of understanding with West Hennepin Affordable Housing Land Trust doing business as homes within reach. So, one, Walt has not, under the previous executive director, been constructing new construction. So there is a direction change under the new executive director, which she's not new anymore, but the new executive director, to actually construct homes and not just rehabilitate them. So that's number one. Number two, uh, 9030 Park, uh, this, the HRA board approved holding that from marketing while we explored other options with West Hennepin Affordable Housing Land Trust. One of those things is, is that we told them we would like to see a two family home. They said, great, we need to do fundraising. So what comes back to in particular, to achieve the affordable homeownership, whether it's a single family home or a two family home, is fundraising and putting those sources together. So we entered it into a memorandum of understanding with Walt that went into effect, I want to say in 2021. They didn't get approval from Minnesota Housing until November of 2022 for funding for anything on that lot. So one, that's a big holdup. Um, it's just putting the multiple sources together so that it's not completely on the HRA or the city in trying to achieve this. But they are absolutely on board with wanting to build a two family home. Secondly, we do have, and I believe my colleague, uh, Nick Johnson can speak to this a little bit more. There are certain restrictions in Bloomington for two family homes. They cannot be within so many feet of another two family home. And that is something that historically the HRA has supported because it was an assumption that two family homes would be more rental property. So it was something that was put in the place to be exclusive again, but this time against renters. Um, so I say all that to say that when the executive director Brenda came from Walt to present to the HRA board, she did provide, we can do a two family home or we can try and do something that's really not in the market in the cities that we work in, which is provide single family plus ADU. And how can we increase the opportunities for ADU? When we previously had this discussion, um, I had mentioned about multi generational and the restriction. I want to be clear, that is a restriction that West Hennepin Affordable Housing Land Trust would have on a property in which they have an ADU. Habitat, PPL, any other mission based organization or the HRA that builds a single family home with ADU or two family homes with ADUs would not put that restriction on there. We would just want it to be owner occupied. We would not require it to be multi generational owner occupied. So I just want to be clear about that. But with potential zoning changes, we could look at not just two family homes, but on some qualifying lots, two family homes with ADUs. And so right now, it's really trying to be more creative to address the needs of people that just do not get served at all in our community, multi generational households or people that are looking to have ADU, um, is why. So just with the approval of November 2022 is when Walt finally got all their funding together for 9030 Park in particular.
May I ask a follow up? Thanks. Uh, thank you for that. That, that's super helpful. So a- ab- absent the, the specifics of that particular lot as an example, are, are there any active projects to build two family homes on any of the HRA owned lots at this time?
No, the HRA owns two lots.
Okay.
One on First and 9030 Park.
Okay.
And the one on First, we were exploring other opportunities and other options, but we have to move through our HRA board. It is a potential change to our program. Uh, Blighted Homes has been the only program that we've administered. So in terms of new construction. So what I want to bring forward is that HRAs are changing. Uh, housing authorities are changing across the nation. And one of the reasons for this is that as HUD is moving away from public housing. So public housing is a particular type of housing and funding. HUD is moving away from that and moving more towards housing choice voucher or different homeownership opportunities. As they move away from public housing, HRAs are now becoming in the place of being developers. And so one of the things that we're seeing here that I'm bringing forward is this hasn't been the typical HRA in Bloomington. And we're evolving. We're evolving with the city, we're evolving with the needs of our community, but we're evolving as an organization. And so that's where this may feel like, oh, what's going on here? You haven't done it before, why are you trying to do it now? Because we're evolving and we're addressing the needs and the plans, policies, initiatives that have already been identified and we have the statutory authority to do such.
Quick follow up on that. That's great, thank you. Uh, that, that was kind of a big part of my question was, um, you know, it, it would, if, if given the, the standards that we had today, especially if we made some of these changes and, and, and we did all this work and we're like, this is still not enough. And, you know, we have to keep moving, like you have to keep getting creative. That would make more sense. It, it, to me, this, um, the, the, the general feeling I've had for a while is that we're being asked to do a lot at one time and I'm much more of an incrementalist just in general, right? Do one thing, see how it works, do the next thing, see how it works. And so it helps to understand that part of what is being done here is an attempt to kind of align, um, the overall zoning, uh, districts and other things like that with, with the multiple levers that you as an authority are trying to pull. So I appreciate that context. Thanks.
Council additional questions? Councilmember Loman?
All right, thank you, Mayor. Um, phenomenal, uh, presentation. Uh, I, you know, I talked with the manager earlier today and I called it the Texas two step. You know, one, you kind of do with the zoning and the next piece is you deal with all the, uh, uh, the, the implements and the tools that we use in order to get that affordability, um, across. Um, so I, I appreciate the, the, the longer piece of it. Uh, it, it certainly, having studied urban planning, um, you know, in college, I, I totally get the, the picture in terms of, of that piece. The, the, the piece that I kind of keep going to, um, you know, one of my colleagues sitting to the right of me, you know, also shares this, um, concern as well. He stated that during the last meeting. So if I look at the overall, um, amount of, of units of, of housing that we have, um, in the city, and I don't know what the year is of this one here that I'm looking at here. There's something in the neighborhood of 25,000, you know, plus owner occupied, uh, homes. And, and I like the number that you used, um, uh, with about four homes that we can, as a city, right, at this point, kind of, you know, bring to bear the amount of, uh, resources, financial resources. Now, of course, obviously, you know, if the city council decided to change that, that number, we could, we could do more. And if we partner with the private sector, so I'm not, so I'm just using this as a, as a gauge, you know, to try to, to have understanding. So let's say over 20 years, we, you know, we're unable to go above that four, which I don't, I don't believe that. I, I think that this council, I was a part of that council that originally said, let's do this stuff, you know, around, uh, around affordable housing. Uh, and I'm certainly, uh, you know, for that. But if I look at that percentage, you know, i- i- it really doesn't even move that needle. You know, if we talk about, you know, in terms of, and that's not a reason not, not to do it. I'm not, not saying that at all. But it, it, um, you know, it's, it's almost less than 1% in over 20 years that we're, you know, it's even far less than that's even half, half a percentage when you look at that. So in terms of the goals that, which that we've, we've put in place, that's kind of where the question lies for me. So for example, if I look at what Minneapolis, um, you know, has done, I think they've done away completely with some degree, uh, with, uh, you know, with this type of, of zoning altogether, if my, my understanding is correct.
They had a good marketing campaign, but they did not do away.
They didn't do away with it at all.
They had a very good marketing campaign, but no.
And so I guess, I guess the question that, that, that I kind of get to, um, you know, when we, we look at, at those numbers, and I'm just talking 20 years, um, you know, and I, and I know that, you know, we have, you know, within the, the ordinance here, the lower density, we can move up to 12, you know, units per, per acre. And, and I also recognize, and I think we as a community need to recognize, and you, you stated it much more eloquently, that where our city is located at, you know, we're in a, uh, you know, we're, we're in the urban core of this, of the city. We are at a time span by which, um, uh, that, you know, it necessitates this, this, this density in terms of our, our, our growth of, as a city. And so the, the question I keep going to, and, and we got to start somewhere.
Yep.
And this really isn't that much density, really. If, if you kind of stop and if you look at the, you look at the numbers and you look what you get out of that, that, that this really isn't that, that big of a lift. And so that's, that's sort of where my problem lies. Uh, and, and so, um, I, I just don't, I don't see how we can get to those goals. I don't, it's a starting point. You got to start somewhere and it's definitely going to make a difference, you know, for those, those families. Certainly I was, you know, one of those beneficiaries, those ones able to get in, in, in the city. And so that's where I'm troubled with, with, with this particular, uh, piece. You know, certainly you got the market out there, but I just, I, I just, I struggle with, 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 with the numbers. If you, if you sit there and you really look at the numbers.
Yep.
And, you know, help me understand how this could be pushed further, um, to, to make this make sense. Uh, because I, I, I just don't, I don't, it certainly, you know, we got to start somewhere.
Yep.
But that, that's where I, I want you to help me understand beyond the, the four homes. You know, how do we, how do we make that dent in that gap there? Because these numbers don't add up.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor, Councilmember Loman, members of the council. Well, one, you're talking to the HRA administrator. Now, I can fully work with quantitative results, but let's talk about qualitative results. You said four homes in 20 years. 20 years is a generation. People aren't staying in homes as long as they used to. Some people argue with me, but people are not staying in homes as long as they used to. So if you take that and think on average that people are staying in homes five to 10 years, you just didn't impact four households, you impacted eight. Eight households that may be at least four family members. Wow. The number of people that you are impacting in the city of Bloomington to allow them to be in the community where they want to be, but that they can be, is making a dent. It's making a huge dent. It's just not one that you can put in quantitative percentages. However, being able to create those four households at less money than what it would have normally taken allows the HRA and the city to move forward on other efforts. We still have home improvement loans, we still have down payment assistance, we still have rehabilitation of current structures, structures to create affordable homeownership opportunities. We now just allow for that funding to go a lot further and impact the lives of the children in Bloomington Public Schools, of which around this area have some of the highest highly mobile and homelessness. So that qualitative impact is that they were able to stay in school and become educated. They were possibly able to get good paying jobs and not consist, consistently be in maybe the same factors in which they were raised in, which being at low income. And they're able to stay in the community in which they want to stay in. I get it. When you put the numbers together, it's four homes. Doesn't sound like a lot, but from the HRA's perspective, from the work that we do and from that housing continuum that's human centered, it's immeasurable.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, you know, I, I appreciate that and that, that, I think that, that, that message of qualitative, you know, that was, that's made all the difference in my family's life. You know, we wouldn't be in Bloomington, you know.
Would you be a council member?
Probably wouldn't be, no. I mean, the veteran, you know, the veteran, uh, home mortgage, uh, piece, uh, you know, allowed our family to, uh, to, to move here. You know, and, and this is another story too, that I, I want to share. And I, I, I shared this before in the past and I know we're just in the question phase of, of, of this piece, but to sort of inform my, my, my question, I'm going to ask my last question and move on here, is that, you know, I, I remember at, at a period of time when my, my mother was on the human rights, uh, or on the Housing and Redevelopment Authority with a former mayor. And, uh, always the question was, um, at the time, because they're like, well, we don't need to have these, these loans or any of these assistance for people who want to be able to have affordable housing in the city of Bloomington. I remember my mom coming home and, and saying to me, hey, you know, gosh, you know, they're showing me these facts and figures, you know, in terms of that people are not coming to, you know, take advantage of the dollars. And I, I asked her, I said, hey, uh, you know, well, when are they having these, you know, these applications? Uh, well, the applications were, were, were set up during the middle of the day and people could not come and take advantage. In fact, they were, they were scheduled at which a time where there weren't any buses that would come for those folks who were able to take advantage of that. Well, we were able to get that changed and we were able to see a change, uh, with that piece. So I, I, I want to, you know, I just think it's so important in terms of, and, and I, I want you to help me understand this. You know, when you talk about qualitative and quantitative, you know, and measures, how do we most effectively measure qualitative pieces when we're looking at the goals, the four goals that, you know, this council and, and past councils, uh, set up? And I wonder if you could help me, you know, with those four goals that were, you know, that were, were stated, you know, so long ago. The increase in affordable homeownership opportunities, provide home, uh, housing options, uh, and housing types, and provide opportunities for infill housing and seek to address homeownership opportunity gaps, uh, among, uh, race.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmember Loman, members of the council. Well, one, it starts with something that this council did put in place and that's continuous community engagement. You have to ask the people that are most impacted or benefited what their impacts are and how has it, how has it worked for them? That's number one. Number two, we, we collect data on a regular basis on the different types of programs and things that we have to use. Number three, I mentioned the Housing Choice Voucher Home Ownership Program. This would be fairly new. Uh, Minneapolis used to have a program that they administered years ago and they shut it down. And then there's a couple other counties and or cities around the state that have this program. But that's one direct qualitative measure. Are we taking people from being on Housing Choice Voucher, considered some of the lowest income, and able to provide them with the education and the tools to not only access homeownership, homeownership, but maintain and sustain it? That's a huge qualitative measure. In addition to that, when we look at our home improvement loans, our home improvement loans are helping people not only stay where they are, but be able to, again, take advantage of the real estate market and sell their property for a value as they have stayed in that property and increase their equity. Those are all qualitative. Mind you, I get it, there's all numbers involved in those, so they're quantitative as well. But those are all qualitative measures that we would use to assess against our four goals.
Councilmember Mua.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Erica, for the presentation. So I wanted to confirm with you. So this goes beyond just the HRA, right? Because this is, the community as a whole, so when we think about that life cycle, it's not just for people of lower income, it's for everyone of every income in the city so that you have the opportunity to get your starter house, move up to a bigger house, move to a bigger house, or come back down, whatever you want to do. So this is not just for the HRA, this is for the city as a whole.
Thank you, Councilmember Mua. That is correct. It is for the city as a whole, but one caveat that I want to throw in there, because as a growing city, you know, I have high aspirations for us. Statutorily, Bloomington HRA can help those that are not adequately served by the marketplace. We have four items in statute that put together our mission and what we're supposed to do. In statute, there's a fifth item. And that fifth item is cities of the first class can help anyone. So cities of the first class means that we have hit and maintained 100, at least 100,000 residents. When that happens, we know it's going to happen, just not when. But when that happens, the HRA actually will be able to help many people across the city and not just be restricted to those not adequately served by the marketplace. So yes, and I wanted to offer that.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. Let's get on to Mr. Johnson's presentation if we could. We do have a second part of this presentation and then we can double back with questions as we need to. How about that? So keep things moving. Thank you, Mr. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Bussi, and members of the council. Before I begin, I'm going to try and plug this computer in. I'm also going to answer every question that you asked. A zoning practitioner is going to have a slightly different response, just coming from a totally different perspective than a housing practitioner. So I wanted to answer your question from a zoning perspective and Councilmember Del Sandro's question about two-family dwellings, because it's a little bit of a different take on those things that might be relevant. So sorry, I just want to make sure this doesn't die on me here. I was trying to do this on the sneak where it was less disruptive. There we go. Okay, thank you. Okay, the question about Councilmember Carter. So irrespective of this ordinance, the planning department in the city of Bloomington gets calls all the time from people looking to sell their homes or just interested in what they can potentially do with their property. They're saying, "Can I subdivide my lot?" I've gotten this question 50 times prior to any discussion about this ordinance. And most of the time, the answer to that question is, "No, you cannot." And so I anticipate that that question, whatever happens with the single and two-family ordinance this evening or in the future, irrespective of what happens with it, we'll continue to get that question. The point about what is the impact in terms of heating the market, in terms of the value increasing value on other people's homes. When we did that candidate site analysis, I provided a long list of caveats about how all these candidate sites, specifically for single-family subdivisions, might be somewhat flawed or problematic. But the number that we arrived at was a little over 1,800 lots. And that's drawing from 21,700 R1s owned lots. What you're really talking about is 8% of the lots would have the potential to do some type of subdivision. So when you're talking about impacts respective to value, if you're talking about the actual ability to subdivide, the top end of that number is 8% because, again, those candidate site analysis is not perfect. It didn't take into account corner lots, site characteristics, all these things that would likely result in some sites not being good candidates for subdivision. The other component to that is that many of these sites have a tremendous amount of value and are valuable to people looking to move into them as single unit dwellings, single-family dwellings. So any prospective developer who'd be looking to do that would be competing against a much larger group of buyers also trying to acquire that property. The third thing I'll talk about a little bit about two-family homes too, is that what I've learned in this process is just there's a much smaller pool of developer actors in this space than in other development spaces, multifamily, commercial, industrial, whatever the case may be. There's just a much smaller pool of actors doing this work. So just a couple of things to consider when you talk about the marketplace. The zoning perspective is on why have not more two-family dwellings been built? So I wrote down four factors, two of which, 2.5 maybe of which, the city has some control on. On the issue of converting an existing single-family home to a two-family home, the city has a 50-foot front setback requirement for two-family homes. So very few of our single-family homes meet a 50-foot front setback. So if you're transitioning it to a two-family dwelling, you're taking a tremendous amount of lots out of the pool right away in terms of conversion standpoint. The same thing goes for our garage requirements. Anyone who would say they met a 50-foot setback, what would be before them in order to conform with our requirements is they would have to build two, if sometimes three, additional garage parking spaces to conform to our requirements to build a two-family home. So the conversion of single-family homes, there hasn't been any conversions in the years that I've worked here. I don't know what the data looks like before that. But converting a single-family home to a two-family home is very difficult on the basis of our zoning rules. And I have gotten some calls, inquiries about doing that. And it just doesn't pencil out for those reasons about the existing structure location and the parking requirements. The second factor to that is has to do with site selection. So 67% of our lots don't meet the lot size requirements for a two-family home. The proposal in this ordinance, lowering that limit to 13,000 on the interior size, that would add approximately 3,000-plus parcels into the pot of available parcels that could be candidates for a two-family dwelling. So that's lowering the sites that don't conform from 67 to 52%. Erica talked about the grouping issue in terms of if there's another one within 500 feet, it requires a much more extensive and costly approval process in order to gain approval for a two-family dwelling. So that's another component. And it's also a highly discretionary action on the part of the city council because it involves rezoning to a planned development. So you're talking about a much costlier, longer process and a process that's not by right development. It's a little bit more rolling the dice on the part of the developer. The third and fourth issue is ones that we have less control over. It has to do with, again, the thing I talked about, there's just less developers doing this work. So there's just less actors in that space. And then the fourth issue is land development, building costs generally also have a factor. So those are the questions I've read that I wanted to provide a zoning perspective on, and now I'll get into my slides. And I'll try and be brief or brisk about it. Yes. Okay. So my planning, my agenda for the planning slides, really quick. The point is certainly interrupt me, provide questions, discussion, certainly want it to be more that informal study session type atmosphere or dynamic. So I certainly welcome that. Don't hesitate to stop me as we go. Before I get into the specific groupings of different proposals, I did want to just touch on some new information that's come to light since we last met on March 20th. So I'll start at that point. One of the things we've consistently heard both from the public and from, you know, advisory boards and commissions, but also the council is, okay, what is the actual dollars and cents to a lot of these provisions that we're talking about? And as planning folks who don't have a lot of consistent interaction with building materials and labor costs and all these types of things, and utility costs and all those types of things, we wanted to get an external source of information outside of the city to really put some numbers to some of these things. And so Housing First Minnesota agreed to do an analysis. They're the main residential building trade association in Minnesota. They agreed to do some analysis about all these different provisions and how they relate to actual dollars and cents. One thing I'll note about this analysis is they don't include land costs. They didn't want to include that factor because it's too variable across the whole region and the state in which they work. So they didn't want to provide any estimate as to the reduced land cost. The HRA provided you some of that potential information. It's going to vary on a site-to-site basis, but just keep that in mind as well. The unit size factor, certainly that's a substantial potential reduction. If you are able to build or desire to build smaller dwellings, you're going to save a lot of money just on the per square foot cost of construction. Reducing the garage and associated driveway, you have up to the potential to save $7,500 approximately per unit. The front setback, most people don't think about that kind of component of added cost, but that does include longer utility runs to your home. It also does include additional driveway typically to your attached or detached garage. So those things can have a cost factor to them. The approval processes, we've talked a little bit about this in terms of the length and the increased cost of some of our applications. Again, if your goal is going to be to try and have additional infill development proposals, lowering the cost of entry on some of these things and the time that it takes to do them certainly can be a stimulative factor in how you look at it. So from like a single unit perspective, single-family perspective, you know, just under 50,000 for two-family per unit, just under $42,000 in potential savings. And again, that is irrespective of land costs. So the city, is there any questions about that before I move on? Oh, that one's more straightforward. Right, okay. So the city did get a zoning proposal from a coalition of Norman Ridge residents. So they did submit a letter from Larkin-Hoffman that did include potential creation of a new zoning district called the Residential Environmental Protection District. There is four main components to it, two of which had to do with increased lot size and lot width, and the other two components kind of built off of existing environmental related performance standards in the city code of tree preservation and 35% impervious surface limits retaining those in certain areas. They did put themselves forward as a potential pilot for this new zoning district. So that request or that idea is before you. And the lot sizes that they're suggesting is 22,000 square feet, and they also would suggest within this district to retain a 65% median lot width. So it builds off our existing standard of, as opposed to an 80% median lot width.
Question, Councilmember Carter?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So we did have some residents come forward during the listening session just to provide a point of clarity. And so is it, am I correct in my understanding that there was just a misunderstanding on their part and they do want, their recommendation is for it to be the current 11,000 square feet? Is that correct?
I believe they submitted a letter today that had 22,000.
Okay.
Councilmember Del Sandro?
Councilmember Carter, I think I can give you a bit of an understanding. The current R1 is 11,000. The current RS1 is 33,000. They were proposing a compromise of those two.
Thank you, Councilmember Del Sandro.
You're welcome.
22,000. So a good deal, yeah.
Councilmember Nelson, thank you.
Got in behind you there. Thank you, Mayor. So just a clarification, because I know part of what they had talked about was that we have other districts that apply to things that are important to the community to protect. I think protecting and preserving trees is obviously important to the community. We had a whole presentation on it earlier. And so, and I think that is, you know, sincerely one of the big concerns that I've heard from them. But my question is looking at like a bluff and steep slope and things like that. Do any of those modify the lot sizes?
Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, council members, the overlay districts that you're referring to, the bluff protection overlay district, flood hazard, those do not establish minimum lot sizes in a residential zoning district.
Okay.
They can have impacts that would necessitate you planning a larger lot theoretically.
Yeah, they would impact like a rear yard setback because you have to be so many feet from where the steep slope starts or something like that, and that may require a larger lot. But the standard isn't set forth, the conditions of the lot dictate that. Is that accurate to my understanding?
Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, I agree with that statement.
Okay. But we do, we do have other ways that we address things that are of importance to the community in those things. So is that, and we already have a tree preservation standard within our code. So that is something that can be looked at to address that concern. Is that accurate?
Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, that's accurate. And I have two more slides about this that might address some of these questions. And maybe if I just kind of go through my little spiel or the staff's analysis of these provisions, then maybe I'll circle back to you. Is that okay? Does that work? So these are the provisions of what's in the proposal. This is a map that we provided to you as part of our prior analysis. And kudos to some of the residents of Norman Ridge, they're very engaged and they do their homework and they're leaning into it, learning a lot about land use and city code. So I give them all the credit in that respect. As far as what we showed you before, if you recall, there was five lots that were likely subdividable. And doing a lot, doing kind of a neighborhood scale analysis, every lot has a different median lot width because you have to go 500 feet from every individual lot. So as a way to expedite that, we kind of established some neighborhood medians. But in the process of doing that, I think in our materials, what we presented to you, we thought that their proposal would move the subdivisible lots in the existing condition from five to four. I think in discussion with a neighbor, he corrected me that one of those lots would actually become subdivitable. So I think it's five to five. I think it's basically a wash in effect. But what I will say about that is that Norman Ridge is a neighborhood that has quite varying lot sizes, I would say. There are other subdivisions where this district could be attractive or desired on the part of some residents in theory that has maybe, where this proposal could be more impactful from a perspective requiring a minimum 22,000 square lot in terms of going backwards in the number of lots that are subdivitable today. It's hard to state that emphatically without doing a lot-by-lot, neighborhood-by-neighborhood analysis. But I guess I say absent that, it is possible that in some perspective, these could be washes to the existing condition, and some neighborhood perspectives, it could be going in the opposite direction. I just want to be clear about that. So what is staff's perspective on these things? You know, as with anything, and maybe that's more your role as policymakers, but I think the question we ask ourselves first with any new, the creation of a new zoning district is not an insignificant action to take. An analysis that we would do is what is the value or the benefit that you're receiving from adding this regulatory complexity versus how, you know, what are the potential downsides or what areas, other areas of the city code can kind of cover these things that are of concern? And I think this is what Councilmember Nelson was talking about a little bit. So just generically speaking, the zoning proposal submitted by the neighborhood coalition from staff's viewpoint is not consistent with the project goals of the overall project. Recognizing that there's characteristics that differ all across the city, just from viewing it from the standpoint of the overall project goals, in our view, it's not consistent with furthering those goals. Okay, I'm going to keep going on that. But one thing I would say on my second bullet in relation to this, and you could make some of these similar arguments for RS1 theoretically, but one of the concerns on the part of staff is that the criteria, you talked about the bluff protection overlay district or flood hazard or shoreline ordinance. These are all provisions that are very precisely prescribed on the land, usually via a contour or a particular slope or something along those lines. Enacting a new zoning district on the basis of criteria that to many people could be certainly deemed subjective in a way, how much vegetation does it take to become highly vegetated? How much, what is the correct slope where it becomes a steep slope lot at a minimum? What is the level of non-conformity in terms of the minimum lot size that the city is willing to accept in terms of looking at rezoning actions? So one of the concerns on the part of staff with establishing a new zoning district as a pilot, it seems like a very innocuous or a small action. But as you start to build momentum in other parts of the city theoretically, where in residents' view or in their view, this new district is appropriate or applicable based on this kind of semi-vague criteria that you have now established, it can kind of take on a life of its own. And sometimes it can be fairly contentious process too. I think that's what staff, working on the RS1 analysis, learned in the early 2000s as well as kind of the development of that district. Yes, there was staff who are still here, who are part of that process, not me. But that's just something to keep in mind. As I said in my previous conversation about analysis of RS1, if the council wants to push in that direction, if they want us to look at rezoning certain properties, that's at the discretion of the council. You are the policymakers. But what we would say is what we would encourage you to do is to create a very consistent line-by-line criteria that you will apply uniformly across every request that the city could potentially see, or if the city chooses to do it proactively, is to just be very could potentially see, or if the city chooses to do it proactively, is to just be very consistent on that front. Yeah, and as, as these, as this request continue to come forward, again, that would be ultimately in the judgment of staff, also against in furtherance of the project goals. So I repeat that point from the front. As far as the perspective about the provisions themselves, you have, in staff's perspective, you have the lot size provisions, and that's kind of in one bucket. Then you have these other components that are in the other bucket. You have increasing tree preservation and you have limiting impervious surface. So to Councilmember Nelson's point about can we look at those things, that's where I finally circled back after five minutes, is that if, if, you know, when the tree preservation ordinance was written in the mid-2000s, we were living in a different circumstance than we are now. The city of Bloomington has, has drawn very strong goals and actionable items around climate and some of these other things. And so staff would fully welcome the idea that we need to evaluate some of these environmental protection components within our city code to see that if they are actually doing what it was intended, number one, but are they adequate just from a perspective of the world that we're living in now versus in the mid-2000s? So if, if the city council thinks that thirty percent reforestation line is appropriate in this particular area, staff would urge you that that might be an appropriate threshold across the entirety of the city, not, not in one particular location. And this is more my problem, but every, you know, regulatory complexity, it's very difficult to have standards that are different in all different low-density residential zones over time if the zone were to expand. So maybe that's a lower point than the other one, but it's something that can create problems. Impervious surface, so I don't want to stall on this too long, but some of the areas that are included in the analysis are quite large, large lot areas. And so there is a possibility that many of these lots, if you were actually to subdivide them down the middle, would exceed eleven thousand square feet anyway on the basis of the lot depth of the areas. At that point, they would be subject to a thirty-five percent impervious surface limit irrespective of that. But if the council was concerned that within certain particular areas of the city, that the provisions that are in this ordinance are inappropriate and we can identify them precisely as to why, staff is open to looking at including those types of provisions, establishing some of those types of limits, because that would still allow the project goals to continue to move forward, if that makes sense. Devils in the details, of course, I'm sure, legislating from the deus aside. The one thing I would say about, and this maybe just gets to the end, I've enjoyed working with a number of residents, are really, really nice folks. But one thing I do want to state is that twenty-two thousand, larger lots unto themselves don't necessarily prevent outcomes that are bad for the environment. There's actually been a number of homes built in, while I've been working here in Bloomington or in my former jurisdiction where it is a large lot area, but because of all the grading and the larger structure that gets constructed, it actually wipes out a lot of trees or it disrupts a lot of the natural environment. On a twenty-two thousand square foot lot, you can build almost eight thousand square feet of impervious surface at thirty-five percent. So I don't want people to think that just as a blanket statement, that that will kind of resolve an environmental protection unto itself. So just that point. So I listened to the listening session a couple of weeks back when this first proposal was first made. I know there was some discussion around stormwater management. I don't want to spend too much time on this, but I just want to restate that new homes that get built in 2023 are subject to the most rigorous stormwater management standards than any single-family dwellings, you know, up until this point in time in Minnesota. So there's all these components that they have to meet, and this actually is a cost. This hurts housing affordability, by the way. This is again, one of those issues of conflicting objectives, obviously. So storm, pre-construction projects, post-construction can't send more water faster off their site than was the pre-construction condition. That's how the stormwater rules are set up. They have to retain a certain rate and volume of water, and there has to be quality treatment. And that has to do with phosphorus and pollutants, not sending these things to our storm source. I know there's some discussion about that at the listening session. I just want to follow back and provide information about that. Wetlands, same thing. I know there's concern about how development can affect wetlands. Wetlands are protected under the Wetland Conservation Act. That really has to do with the actual disturbance of wetlands, not allowed to do that. And watershed districts enforce buffering requirements. So what does that mean? That means native vegetation, can't have turf grass, all these lawn grasses catch the pollutants before they get to the wetland. You can, water can go to wetlands, water's supposed to go to wetlands. It's just you don't want the pollutants going there. So really quickly, two quick examples. These are single-family builds in Bloomington within the last five years. These are stormwater management facilities that had to be built with these homes, infiltration ponds. In this next example, there's a wetland just to the west of this property. Those dashed lines that you see delineated around the wetland are the required wetland buffers by the watershed district. Fortunately for this property owner on the site adjacent to them, but review of the stormwater management plan does occur prior to a building permit being issued. So this is just two quick examples. So getting to the heart of the matter, yes, Councilmember Nelson, sorry, I'm not in charge of this thing.
Councilmember Nelson? And then Councilmember Loman, Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick questions for you. You had said there, there may be some consequences with regards to those larger lots because they could have more impervious surface, so they could put pools and patios and have all that type of stuff in addition to the house and the driveway and things like that. Is that accurate?
Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, yes, as long as they're maintaining under thirty-five percent limit, they can.
Okay.
Add hardscapes.
And as part of that process, they could take down trees to put those things in up to the limits in the ordinance?
Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, that's correct. Our tree preservation standards apply only at subdivisions, platting, actions.
Okay.
Not at building permits.
Just follow up with that. So you can take down more trees than what's in there if, as long as there isn't a building permit involved?
I'm sorry, maybe I misunderstood your question. You're saying if a site was subject to a tree preservation plan?
Yeah.
So the tree preservation plan expires after a certain duration after the plat approval?
Okay.
Yes.
So then where I'm trying to go with this is, so let's say you have a larger lot that is subdivitable under whatever rules we end up with, but you've used up a lot of that with impervious surface. Do you get somehow grandfathered in? Like if you take a twenty-two thousand square foot lot and you have eight thousand of impervious surface between your house and your amenities, you divide that by in half and you're over the amount you can have, what happens?
Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, that person would have no other regulatory outlet other than to seek a variance, which we would not support because it's a situation purely created by the landowner. It doesn't meet the state and the local tests for a variance. I mean, I looked at our council about that, but no, that's, that's going to result in them not subdividing that lot.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Loman?
Thank you. I should have stopped you earlier because I had a question about, you had the community zoning proposal, the staff feedback. And, you know, I want to just say I appreciate the staff's perspective and point of view in this. And the question that I want to just be clear in my mind is for the RS zone, that's not really a part of this proposal at all, right? Am I, am I, am I correct in terms of my thinking with that? In terms of that, that's not really a part of what we're looking at here?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Loman, to be precise, there was some very modest adjustments to the lot width requirement of RS1, but the area remains thirty-three thousand square feet and the median lot width requirement is still in place.
So if I were to, if I were to lay down, or if I wanted to say, I want to include that, that piece or that zoning piece in this proposal, and I were to lay, you know, what the community has put forward, because I'm certainly interested in bringing in density, no matter what the, what the district is. If I were to lay out that RS zone, you know, to this particular proposal, would staff, you know, have some of the same findings? Or would you find that, and this is kind of unfair, you know, because I'm putting you on the spot, you know, would you have some of the same findings or would you find some distinguishing characteristics between, you know, what, what they're putting forward and what's in that RS zone?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Loman, we certainly, we want to know what our history is and why decisions were made and what actions got us to where we are. So we want to be deferential to the decisions that prior councils have made and what they felt was in the best interest of the community at that time. What I would say about the RS1 areas is that they, the characteristics of them are of larger lots than, I know we spent a lot of time talking about this particular neighborhood, but what we did do as part of this effort is do an analysis in terms of the level of nonconformity of the site area within those neighborhoods. And they met, you know, varying levels of thresholds. And that's where I'm, that's what I meant by is that a lot of pressure can be exerted on decision-making bodies about my neighborhood meets your criteria, well, maybe, you know, at different levels. Some of these things are, so, you know, we didn't include it because we were thinking, we were being deferential to the decisions that were made then, and the characteristics of those lots are more consistent with that district of how it was created and established. There's a pretty extensive study that was done when they created it. So that's where we're at.
Yeah, no, I mean, you know, thank you for that. You know, we just heard the conversation just prior to this, and so I take this in that, that context, you know, in terms of, and so that's, that's sort of where I got to have another problem with, with, with the proposal. If our goals are those four stated goals, and then we have a district that's, has no density at all, gosh, that seems strange to me. And now I got a proposal here that provides some type of density. Now, I don't necessarily agree with the density that's here, but to me, it's certainly better. And I know we're in the question period of things. So that's, you know, so I really didn't hear an answer to my question in terms of, you know, that comparison.
Mayor, if I can provide one more point about that, with RS1, we're in the, Glenn has the number, the exact number on his computer back there, but it's, it's a little over a hundred some lots, RS1. But so from our perspective, you know, why, why are we so emphasizing R1? It's because that's where all the opportunity is, you know, the very high percentage of your low-density residential areas are zoned R1. RS1 is, it's over a hundred lots in the city. So the opportunity is much less, even if you were to pursue those types of policies, make them applicable to the RS1. At that point, if, if it were, let me, let me take one step back, another important point. We did not want to rezone any properties as part of this process. If you are going to make the rules of the RS1 equivalent to the R1, it doesn't make sense to have an RS1 district, which we, in which we would pursue rezoning those properties as opposed to changing the underlying rules of the R1 zoning district.
Thank you.
That, that provides some.
I think that's very helpful for me, you know, as a policymaker, as we, as we look at the proposal that's coming, coming forward, because, you know, the question I have myself as well, why don't they just go into the RS district? Well, there's no density there. Well, it's only a hundred lots, but then that, the same arguments that are made to not do this are the same arguments that can be made for that RS. Folks, you know, taking the flight, if you will, out of the R1 zone into this other one. So I guess for me, I need to look at all of this. So I just, that's the question. So I appreciate that answer.
Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I'm just wanting to better understand the point you're making. And are you, so are you saying that we should also be looking at RS1? So if we're looking at R1, changing the standards around all, all of the things that we're considering, right? Not just lot size, but all of the things, that we should also be looking at that for RS1? Maybe not the same numbers, but at least considering those lots, like maybe instead of thirty-three thousand square foot, I'm not sure what it is, like maybe it should be twenty-eight or twenty-five. I don't know, but is that what you're saying?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Carter. Yeah, no, I, my question is, okay, we've got this proposal here and staff is saying, you know, just, just you eloquently stated, you know, we don't want you to, you know, we wouldn't recommend you do that. Well, okay, I get that. But then why are we not touching anything with the R, you know, RS piece? If we're talking about equity inclusion, even though it's a hundred lots, well, you know, if I'd said over twenty years, I'm taking, you know, you know, get, you know, with four lots and I'm claiming I get eighty lots, that's, you know, we're not using quantity. You know, it's qualitative. So, yeah, that's, that's kind of the question that's rolling around in my brain.
Mayor, thank you. I'll proceed if, on the buckets discussion.
Should, please.
Okay, so, and please, certainly free-flow discussion on this component of the discussion. The way that we've kind of structured this is just that we, we see all of the provisions that are within this ordinance in five buckets. And the reason that they are grouped together is that, and some of them are more singular, but everything within a particular bucket is related to one another in some fashion. So I'll pause as I, I'll present a bucket or a grouping of amendments, and then I'll pause and can take your questions or discussion. And I think the goal of this is just trying to get consensus or direction for staff in terms of how we should proceed with these particular amendments. One thing I will say about the ordinance that I don't know if I've emphasized this in prior presentations or prior other staff who've worked on this, but the, the ordinance before you, from staff's perspective, represents the sweet spot of opportunity for what Bloomington's infrastructure allows. And the reason I say that is that our storm sewer can only take on so much stormwater. You're limited to certain X amount of impervious surface, and most of Bloomington is not in an alley-loaded configuration. And so in terms of looking at different lot sizes or how we arrived at these things, I don't know if that's been said before, but I'm just stating it in those terms because I think oftentimes, like, how did we get here? So I just want to make that point. I heard one other point too, maybe I should just go forward, sorry. So minimum unit size. What, what we're going to do as part of these buckets is try and just, again, just summarize where the current standard lies and what is being proposed, and what are the direct connections to the, the city goals that we've talked about on many levels? So the existing standard is a thousand forty for a single-family dwelling, two-family nine-sixty. We're proposing to eliminate these based on favoring minimum occupancy standards in the state building code, certainly as people go through the expense to construct habitable dwellings, they're, they're going to provide them a certain size. But currently, there's many dwellings in Bloomington that we think serve a very important purpose and serve a wide, a good spectrum of Bloomington residents that you can't build today. And one thing, I don't know if Erica said this exactly the way that I'll say it, but in a lot of ways, building a smaller dwelling now, even though it's quite expensive to do new construction now, will at some point be naturally occurring affordable housing at some point in the future. At what point in the future of that inflection? Harder to estimate that, but at some point, that can occur there. So what are the direct impacts of, of getting rid of minimum unit sizes? I mentioned the housing first cost analysis on the per square foot. So there's a direct connection to affordability in terms of the ability to build a smaller home. That certainly has impacts on trying to go at the ownership gap that's been talked about tonight. And then the new housing types, this is maybe the biggest, or one that resonates with me, and I heard Councilmember Nelson talk about seniors and other types who are just looking for a different product than what Bloomington has to offer, or at least does not have enough of, maybe I'd say. And so that's, that's that bucket, and that one's maybe more self-explanatory here. But is there any questions or discussion about that one? No?
No questions.
Okay. So I'll move forward to the, the building front setback. So again, in our single-family areas, two slides here for this bucket. We do have this prevailing lot setback requirement in our experience in enforcing the, or reviewing the city code. There's, there tends, there does tend to be some situations of kind of arbitrary applicability in terms of where certain dwellings have to meet a greater setback. We talked about the utilities and the driveway runs, that there's some cost savings to be had there, but also from a sustainability standpoint, having additional, if you have to have a fifty-foot-long driveway, that's twenty feet of extra pavement that is unnecessary that our stormwater management systems have to account for, that are heating up the area, et cetera, et cetera. So that's something to be considered. It also does push the dwelling further into the backyard. Everyone uses their property differently. Some people want to emphasize backyard recreation or who knows what. But these are just some things to think about with respect to prevailing setback. With respect to the two-family dwelling front setback, I talked about convertibility of existing single-family homes to two-family. The number one thing that presents a barrier to that is that front setback of fifty feet. So similar factors here in terms of impact on the city goals, just moving it to a thirty-foot flat setback. This one is, this one does have a direct connection to more infill housing opportunities. We do have a lot of lots that are, have substantial depth and can account for a fifty-foot setback, but some lots are shallower. And when you have a fifty-foot front structure setback, that makes the usability of that lot much more difficult to pencil out a site plan that makes sense for people and also meeting the thirty-foot rear yard setback requirement. So that can, in staff's way of thinking, it's not just the area that might put more lots on the table, it's also addressing that setback because some lots lots on the table, it's also addressing that setback because some lots are shallower and a 50-foot setback just is not a good situation in that regard. So, I'm sorry, I should have paused there. Any questions about setbacks in that bucket or discussion?
I think the group will speak up if there's questions.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry. Garage parking, both relative, relevant to both single and two-family dwellings. We talked about the housing first data, $7,500 per additional garage stall. So that certainly is a factor here. As if you, as you look to narrower lots potentially, having the ability to only construct one stall does a lot in terms of being able to cite the structure appropriately. So there's a number of factors that, and that kind of gets into the more infill housing opportunities. But more housing types, just not all households need a two-car garage. Some would argue don't need a garage, but we think that the sweet spot is one. You know, we are, we're cognizant of having to need some storage, too. Our, our environmental health folks do value that, that it does help in some of those regards. So just making those points. Sustainability, you know, again, additional driveway space that is unnecessary theoretically if you don't want that, as well as just the, the building materials themselves are, come at a cost in that regard as well.
So Mayor, I got a question on that one.
Okay.
So, so when we, you know, if we went to just, you know, we kind of did, you know, what we ended up doing with, with apartments, we just said, you know what? The market's gonna bear that. Why don't we just lift the, you know, let the market, you know, drive that, that decision from a, you know, do, do staff feel that we, we're at a point, you know, because at some point, you know, we, we may not even have cars, you know, coming, you know, to these residential areas, depending on how the technology goes, you know? I mean, I, I know you mentioned the storage, but some of that storage could be handled either by, you know, temporary, you know, a shed or, you know, within the house. I mean, obviously, there's certain, you know, doing the stuff for the fire department, you, you, the stuff you can't put in there. But why not just lift that and let the market drive that, that decision-making around that?
Mayor Councilmember Lowman, I, I don't think, you know, that's a, that's probably one on the staff level, though there's probably a lot of different opinions in the room in terms of what the right approach is. So I think we view this as the correct compromise position on that at this time. If it's something that we got data on and that we did more thorough analysis of subsequent of the approval, we certainly could look at that again at a later date. I'm not trying to non-answer your question, I promise. It's just, I think it's, there's a, there's, in kind of the, the cooking process or the, you know, there's just a lot of cooks in the kitchen. I think that, that's, that's where we landed.
I appreciate that. I know I've come around full circle on my, my, my belief system in terms of storage inside of an apartment building. And I don't know that I see this any, any different. I, I really do think the market will, will really drive the, the correct decision from a construction standpoint. So, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, getting to the approval processes. So there's two different processes that are involved in this ordinance. One has to do with subdivisions that don't result in more than two lots, so lot splits in effect. And the other one is for the grouping of two-family dwellings. So first, we'll just talk about the lot splits. There's a, there's gonna be a table in both this slide and the next slide in the upper-right corner, which gives you the diff, the cost differences between what is being proposed by moving it from a type 3 to a type 1 lot. The timeline that it takes to get a plat approved is also, is also shorter. And so staff's perspective on that is that it, you know, it's all, just under $1,000 of savings in application fees. The time does have value as well. We're thinking that this could expedite more or help, could help support more infill development opportunities as time goes on. I, I do want to come with it full, be honest with it on both sides, is that a type 3 plat does require a public hearing at the planning commission. So it does involve that neighborhood notification. And so that's the process that people have to go through right now in order to subdivide a lot. Moving it to a type 1 would forego the public hearing component at the planning commission, but city council does have to take action. Those splits are typically on your, your type 1 plats, not splits, because those are type 3 right now. Those are typically on your consent agendas, is how you're typically taking action on those. Is there any questions on that particular one?
Councilmember Nelson and Councilmember Martin. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. Is there a significant cost to doing the mailing, just to let people know in case they did have a concern or wanted to reach out to the council? And also, you had mentioned earlier, I believe, about just regulatory complexity, you know, making your internal processes the same all the time. So is there a concern there? Is there a cost concern of just providing that notice to the neighbors?
Yeah, Councilmember, I'm sorry, Mayor Bussey, Councilmember Nelson. So a couple of things to think about there. You know, there's probably a lot of different actions that the city takes that are kind of locational-based, where they said, because it wasn't necessarily required in city code, that we did a mailed notice. So we, we certainly could look with that. One concern about that is just kind of picking and choosing when we do it that. If you do, if you do embed that in the city code, obviously, we wouldn't be picking and choosing, we would be doing a mailed notice. The cost isn't that significant. I mean, it, it can be quite a bit different if you have a condo property, say, with many different sub-addresses within a nearby proximity area. But, you know, with staff time and with doing the postage, you know, it's typically in the range of $1.50 per property or per recipient. I will note that we are working on air, ways as a pilot to also do mailed notices to renters in a, or tenants in addition to just property owners. So that cost, so don't quote me on, well, the 150 per makes sense, but it's hard for me to put a hard number because every property's gonna have a different situation around them in terms of how many properties you're notifying. So we could adjust for that in the fees. The fee for the type 3 does account for the notice, and there is no fee for the notice in the type 1 currently in our fee schedule.
Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. Just briefly, and I, I like the point about giving kind of a heads-up potentially, but just a discussion, if we were to move forward with these changes, I, I do like the idea of setting up the expectation that if the plating action were to mat, were to meet all the standards that we have put forward, the expectation is that it would be due course of the city to move something like that forward. Whereas, kind of setting up a full public hearing kind of creates the expectation of, that these would be at that point more controversial, I guess, maybe is the wrong word, than they would need to be otherwise. So if, if we say, these changes and these type of plats are in alignment with our strategic plan and the direction of the community, I think we should be treating them like items that are purposed for a consent agenda. That's just me.
Yeah, Mayor Bussey, if I can add to that. Of course, if there was any variance or any other action that did necessitate, that was associated with it, then of course, there would have to be a public hearing.
Mayor, can I follow up on that quick?
Councilmember Nelson?
I think Councilmember Martin makes a good point, just in terms of expectations. I know we've, in the past, had people leave unhappy because really, we have no choice. It meets all the requirements. I mean, there, there isn't something for us to consider there. And by, by having that public meeting, there's a presumption that your input could move the decision. Yet, if it meets all the requirements, we have probably, you know, we actually had it one where, you know, they, the courts told us, no, you can't do that. And so I, I just, I don't know that that applies to the mail notice. I just would want to make sure people didn't have a misunderstanding of what they were doing or what, what was being asked of them, so.
Mayor, thank you. If that's okay, I'll move on to the next approval process, and that has to do with the groupings of two-family dwellings. Again, if there is another two-family dwelling within 500 feet along streets, currently, it's considered a grouping under our code. It is allowed, but only via approval of a planned development process. So you're, you're talking about a substantial fee associated with that process of $4,150. An eight-to-10 week process, as I mentioned earlier on in my presentation, involves a rezoning, which is at the highest level of discretion on the part of the city council to take action on it. So some uncertainty there. The proposed process, we have a number of different uses in Bloomington that are approved by the planning commission, subject to appeal. That's kind of the key point there at the end. So that's what we would propose is a CUP related to groupings of two-family dwellings. The approximate timeline of that process is six weeks. And that does involve a notice, a public hearing notice to the neighbors. So touching on, you know, other goals, I, I mentioned this on other slides, but this one does impact affordability. From our perspective, it will encourage additional infill development. When, when the procedural hurdles are a little bit lower to clear, we just think that it does stimulate more activity. So if there's no questions about that one, I can keep, keep going. Okay, I think this is kind of the main event here, is the lot size and lot width requirements for, I'll start with the two-family, but also the single family. And so hopefully, one of the theme words that's been the through line of this process is opportunity. And so these are the provisions within this ordinance that either create or reduce the most amount of opportunity in terms of what the potential outcomes are, the potential value. You were talking about the numbers earlier, Councilmember Lowman. So with respect to two-family dwellings, right now, the minimum interior lot size is 15,000. We'd propose to reduce that to 13,000 with a site width of 80 feet. The corner site size is a little bit larger because, of course, to accommodate front setbacks on both sides. I will note, in my answer about the conversion of single-family dwellings earlier, or why are not more single-family dwellings being built? So these general site sizes do add about 3,000-plus parcels to the candidate list. Now, that doesn't mean they don't have to go through their own individual review, and they might not be good candidates. And the, the existing dwellings on many of these lots themselves have value that exceed the, the, don't tip the scales towards full redevelopment, although some conversion might be possible there. But yeah, so I mean, I think it's really just about opportunity. As we mentioned at the March 20th meeting, a substantial proportion of our two-family dwellings are actually homeowner-occupied. I think that was kind of a misconception that was, we were hearing earlier on in the process, is that they're predominantly rentals. That's not true, on the basis of how many rental licenses we have with, on our two-family dwellings. So when you talk about more affordable ownership opportunities, you know, with the condo laws the way that they are, it's just difficult to, in a built-out city, to keep adding opportunities. And a two-family dwelling might be a good way to do that. Yeah, I think that kind of touches on everything I wanted to say on that slide.
So Mayor, I've got a question on this one here.
Councilmember Lowman.
So we did the 15,000 down to 13,000. In, in other slides, you've talked about, you know, why that number. Help me understand, you know, why, why the 13, 13,000 as opposed to 12,000 or, or split it all the way down to 7,000?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Councilmember Lowman. My brain is a little bit swimming. I was in the room when that, when these things were all created. Mike Palermo, you remember former planner Mike Palermo?
A lot of stuff going on.
Shout out, shout out to Mike. He did a, he did basically a land area analysis of what the various needs, minimum lot area needs were in relation to other standards that we were talking about. So some of it had to do with kind of the reduced setback requirement associated with corner lots, like what the lot area savings was attributed to that. And I think it included attributing some of that proportion or percentage to interior lots as well. But yeah, I'd, forgive me, I, I was involved with that work, but it does have to do with a proportional reduction in terms of what we still think a dwelling can be accommodated on and still meet the impervious surface requirements and the other elements that are required. So we did look at that, too, but we would look at that with any kind of use.
Thanks for bringing that down. Thank you.
The single-family lot size, width, and impervious surface standards, and the comprehensive plan is also related to these specific components of the ordinance. But again, reducing the minimum interior lot from 11,000 to 7,800, the corner lot from 15,000 to 11,050 with the associated widths, as you see on the slide. The impervious surface maximum for 11,000-square-foot lots would be allowed to go up to 45%, although would need additional stormwater management to mitigate that increase in stormwater. And staff is also proposing that those lots, if they were to take advantage of that provision, would have to, subsequently have to add more trees to their property. We currently don't have a landscaping requirement for single-family dwellings in Bloomington. We do for two-family dwellings, but this would be above and beyond what that requirement would be. I would note that that, the language of the 45% is existing in our, not the tree component, but is existing in our two-family provisions today. So it's kind of modeled on that. And the other thing, a point I made earlier, is that in larger lot areas, theoretically, unless you're doing a very odd lot configuration of where you draw your lot boundary, many of these lots will exceed 11,000 square feet. And at that point, the code provision would require them to be capped at 35%. So this isn't a kind of a, this isn't retroactive or applicable to all sites. What it's really accommodating for is the scenario that we see typically in eastern and central Bloomington, where you've got a little bit more constrained site. It's hard to meet that 35% cap in some situations. So that's really what it's accommodating for. Before maybe the discussion, can I proceed on this next slide? I just want to show this, too, is that this isn't a slide we showed before, but just to the point about staff evaluating kind of what are the impacts on alternative solutions to this issue of about opportunity. And so we did some analysis, similar to our candidate site, site analysis, it's the exact same program there. We, we dialed in what would a 65-foot-wide lot look like with 8,400 square feet, minimum lot size? What would a 70-foot-wide lot look like at 9,100? What would a 75-foot-wide lot look like at 9,750? So as you can see, there's just a very much clear trend line that the amount of opportunity is, drops off significantly the further you dial that minimum lot area upwards. So hopefully, that is pretty clear. So kind of getting back to that point about the sweet spot between the opportunity and the infrastructure of what's available to us here. The comp plan amendment, I'll, I'll go back to the single-family. I'm sure there's discussion about that. But the point of the comp plan, I hope this was communicated before, but really, it's just to implement the outcomes that are consistent with the ordinance itself. If you were to allow a 7,800-square-foot lot, that's a 5.5 units per acre. One home is exceeding your max density of your existing comp plan. If you want to allow that, if you think that type of lot is appropriate, and an ADU can be accommodated in a code-complying fashion, you're now at two lots. That gets you up to 11.3 units to the acre. So we view this as very much just an adjustment of, to accommodate the desired goals and performance standards that are included within this ordinance. I would say that all of the existing density ranges, all of your multifamily districts, for example, all have minimum-max density ranges. All of those things still govern. What the uses are themselves still govern. I know that there's uses listed in the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan is a guidance document. It's about a future vision for the community. What is actually allowed on the ground is in your zoning code. So I just want to be clear about that. So, yeah, that's kind of, and I have the ranges if you want to look at that. But we can go back to the lot size, if you like. I know there's been discussion about that or questions. But yeah.
Councilmember Alessandro.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I have more of a, I guess, a general question. What, what are we trying to get accomplished tonight in terms of, of, of direction, I assume? Okay. Um, okay. You mentioned you had six specific things. I'm literally fine with, one, two, three, six, one, two A, two B, three, four A, four B, and six on the fence. I'm struggling with number five, which is the single-family stuff. Do we want to talk about those things and get consensus, if we have it or whatever, first and then deal with this? It seems to be, to be maybe something we could get accomplished and feel good about as a group, so we could then focus our efforts on the, where we might have disagreement and/or conflict, whatever you want to call it.
Our goal tonight is to give staff direction as to where we're headed next.
Yeah.
Whether we're gonna accept what the staff has brought forward, whether we're gonna make modifications to it, whether we're gonna, whatever we're gonna do and how we're going to do it. So I, I do think it makes good sense with the, with the, the major buckets that, that was, were presented here, maybe we could have those discussions.
Right.
And figure out where we, you know, where we are in consensus and where we have to have the continued discussion.
Okay, that, that, thank you. So then let me propose my, my thoughts on those buckets, and then we, yeah, right there's perfect. And then we can, we can talk about it. To be blunt, unit size, setbacks along streets, off-street parking, garage requirements, approval processes, I, I am in fine shape with all of them. If everybody else is in fine shape with all of them, or if we have issues there, I think we need to spend more time on the last one. But I think those first four, I think, were in largely in agreement. Am I correct on that?
Councilmember Alessandro is throwing this out. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. I am in agreement. I also just wanted to clarify-
I also just wanted to clarify. So again, even with unit size setbacks, off-street parking, and approval process, that still is only applying to R1. Those changes will not apply to RS1, correct?
Mayor Councilmember Carter, the, so there's the zoning district, and then there's the use, single-family dwelling. So parking and approval processes, those do apply to, because it applies to the use.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
Yes. The, I, let me back up, sorry. Devils in the details. Prevailing setback is proposed to remain in RS1, again, based on the characteristics of those neighborhoods. So
Okay.
The front setback for single-family dwellings in RS1 is, as currently drafted, still includes prevailing setback.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Additional questions? Councilmember Lohman?
Well, I can kick through this thing. You know, I think, you know, from a unit size piece, you know, I do have some issues with that. You know, I mean, and I've stated, you know, stated that, those pieces in the garage piece. You know, I'd like to see something different with that. It's not enough for me to hold this whole thing up. But, you know, certainly, I think as we're, as we're looking at trying to maximize what we're trying to do here, I just think that, that I think we'll get to a point in time where we will, you know, look at this and say, hey, is it, you know, is it just two? Or is it three? Is it four, you know, units we want to look at, you know, on a particular plot of property? And I don't want to have a garage shut that down, you know? So, but again, those things could be adjusted and changed later on. So I don't want to get, get stuck with that, that piece. So I'm certainly happy to come back and have a look at that later on, so.
Thank you, Councilmember. So from a bucket perspective, as we're talking unit size, setbacks, off-street parking, garage requirements, and approval process, do I see enough nodding heads to direct staff that we want to move forward with what the staff has recommended to this point? Councilmember DeLisandro.
Yeah, I think that's what I'm proposing. And I do like Councilmember Nelson's idea of a mailing option on, as part of the approval process on the splits. But if that's doable, I don't know what cost that comes back, but if we could get an option out, like a look at that, I think that makes sense. Do you?
Be a good suggestion?
Yeah, it's a good suggestion.
All right. And that leaves us then with lot size, width, impervious surface, and the comp plan amendments. So as Nick said, the main event here with all of this. We have the two different breakdowns. It breaks down a number of different ways. We've got the two-family lot size, the single-family lot size, and impervious surface, and then the comp plan possible amendments as well. Thoughts on the, on the, Councilmember DeLisandro?
I'm just going to keep trying here.
You're pushing.
Just, I want to make sure we get to the heart of the conflicts that we have. And I think, you know, thankfully, we've had so much lovely residential input and things like that. I think we all kind of heard the same things. And so, so on the two-family stuff, I don't have any challenges with the size and width requirements. I don't know if anybody else is in a different spot there, but those looked fine to me. In fact, as you can probably hear from my comments earlier, I wish we were doing that first, so that we could get a sense for what that would do to our, our thing before we went and made change all over the city, because there's 5,000 properties that could get that done today without any changes. And so I'm struggling with this idea that because people don't want to build it, we're not building it when, when we can give people all kinds of reasons to build things in the city. And we do it every day. So, but I, so if you'll move to the slide, Nick, I apologize. The, the two-family, is what I'm looking for.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Yeah. I would be, does anybody have any major issues with this one?
Councilmember Lohman, talk about it.
Well, let's keep it moving. I'm not going to shut it down here. And mine, mine with this has to do with, with, you know, the other zoning districts. So I want to just be sure that we're including everything. So, and I also think that this could, could be lower, too. But I don't, again, I don't think there's a widespread amount of folks that are, that are going to jump on with me on that. So I'm willing to kind of let this roll, roll on, so.
I would like to request that when we talk about measuring success and we throw impact on city goals as affordability, because I personally don't believe it's doing anything for personal, for affordability, we should put the number of two-family units constructed and the affordability percentage there, if we really want to track what we're saying it is going to do. Because I have a feeling we're not going to see that, but that's okay. Let's make sure we're measuring it.
Very good.
Anybody, everybody else is good? Let's keep going then. All right. Why not? Mr. Mayor, are you okay with that?
I am okay with that, yeah.
Okay. Um, let's skip this one. Go to the next one. We'll get back, we'll get it. Okay, so this one, I'm, this one, I'm also, I, I don't personally have any challenges with this. This made sense to me, just given the fact that as a planning document, we wouldn't want a comprehensive planning document that is misaligned with changes we've made. That makes sense to me. Does anybody else have an issue?
And I think to Mr. Johnson's point, I mean, this, this is a planning or a perceptive document as opposed to the zoning code, which is actually the boots-on-the-ground kind of requirement, so, yes.
Okay.
Should I go backwards?
Yeah. So what do we have left? Is it just this right here?
I think so, yeah.
It's going to be. So, great. So I think that the, the challenge that I have, especially when we think about some of the variety of, of, the, the impact here is larger proportionally on some residents and not others, right? So you have residents who have, you have residents who have lot sizes that are this size. You have residents who have lot sizes that are twice this size. You have residents in the city who have lot sizes that are three times the size of our current standard, who are all going to be asked to go to a minimum width. Now, I don't necessarily, I understand that just because we change the minimum doesn't mean we change the outcome for that property. I totally get that. But the question that I want to ask is, you know, is there, is there a better way to manage that proportionality, the proportional, proportional impact on those? So for example, I know our residents at Norman Ridge proposed a 22,000-square-foot thing. The RS1, the RS1 zoning district wasn't implicated in here at all. But if you proportionally, and, and by the way, the Norman Ridge community is not currently eligible per planning for the RS1 designation because of the, because of the variety of lot sizes that they have. However, if we did to the RS1 district what we're doing here, which is proportionally reducing its width by 30%, they would become compliant. And so it gives us the opportunity to, without adding a new zoning district into the mix, potentially solve some of the particular environmental and other challenges that certain residents have brought to our attention without necessarily not, without introducing a new zoning district, and with the idea that we would also increase the density options for that entire RS1 district, which we are not considering tonight, and I think would be a net benefit. So I throw that out there as a, as a way to compromise here a little bit. I do understand that we open ourselves up for lots of different neighborhoods, potentially petitioning to become RS1. I get that, and I, you know, we have to manage that. But if they have good reasons to be so, I don't know why we wouldn't, considering it's an existing ordinance today. So that, that is what I'd throw out there as an, as an option to potentially resolve what I personally have as a conflict in peanut buttering this, in my opinion, very blanket change to the whole city, when we know we have some real variability, both in cost and size and affordability and everything like that. Thoughts?
Councilmember Martin, Councilmember Lohman, Councilmember Muawar. Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Councilmember DeLisandro. I know we've exchanged messages on this, and I think it's a, it's a thoughtful approach to maintain some of that nuance. I think that the part I'm getting hung up on is, and this is a pretty sweeping statement, but it feels like some of that variability has created some real structural issues. I mean, the fact that we have, and I've mentioned this before, it feels like two, we have Richfield stapled to Eden Prairie with a highway in the middle, in terms of everything from our road layout to our lot sizes to, I mean, you just look at the map and you see it. And I think that's part of the reason we see the yawning disparities we do between the two halves of our community, is because we haven't addressed or, or done a better job of mixing those two models together in a cohesive way. Health outcomes, lifetime income, and even just a perception of this being one community. So I, I do see the concern with the one-size-fits-all approach, but I think it would be a step in the right direction, even just symbolically, to saying if we're one community, one size is something to start moving towards, or one set of standards. And I think, I would be, obviously, I spoke on this quite a bit last time, so I'll keep it short, but I, I'm in favor of moving forward with staff's proposal as put together here. But I would like to come back and take a look at something like the RS1. And I'm intrigued by the idea of the environmental protection overlay generally. But if that were to come back and we were to move that direction, it seems like an assertion that these changes would have an environmental impact, but I haven't seen any real evidence of that.
Yeah.
Yeah. So are we going to lose trees? If we do lose trees, is that a big deal? We've got a lot of trees in a habitat corridor. What kind of habitat is it? Or, I mean, endangered or threatened species already have plenty of protections. Is this coyotes and deer moving through the habitat corridors? Because I get a lot of emails about why we're not shooting some of those animals. So when that comes back for additional study, I think setting this as a baseline of moving towards more unified direction, but then saying, once a lot of those questions are answered, where do we do those targeted improvements? Because I'm just kind of surprised a lot of those concerns don't come up if our current standards are so environmentally degrading until a conversation like this. So, anyway, it's all over the place, but.
Councilmember Lohman?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, you know, density to me does not necessitate, you know, a harm to sustainability. I just, I don't agree with that, that thesis. That's just not something I'm going to, I'm ever going to, ever going to agree with. I just, I don't necessarily think that because we make these changes and we make housing more dense, that, that this, that that in and of itself is going to create an environmental situation. The problem that I have tonight is, you know, we have the Norman Ridge neighborhood. They've come forward, and they've asked for, you know, kind of what the RS area, you know, already has. And so, you know, I mean, so I guess, you know, the only way I look at this is, you know, you gotta, you gotta include them somewhere, because, you know, they've got a problem with this. So my thing is, I've got to try to figure out where to put these guys, you know? Do they go, do they go into the RS1? But now I don't have any density at all, at one bit at all with that. At least the proposal that they've brought forward, now I don't necessarily agree really with, you know, how that is structured and set up, you know, in terms of the premise. I got a problem with that. I don't, you know, but that's the same, you know, there's some premise that's going on with the RS, RS1 as well. There's somehow, it's only 100 lots, you know, but, you know, you know, these are, you know, a few, few lots, too. So I guess my, my problem is, is if we talk about equity and, and inclusion, you know, I think we really need to be also looking at the, the RS lots, you know, RS1 lots tonight. I just, I just, for myself tonight, I just cannot move forward until I have some resolution to that. Because I just don't know that we can, we can, we can talk about those four goals that we talked about, and somehow, we've got a small zoning district that this just doesn't apply to. That just doesn't make any sense to me at all. So I, you know, I think I would be more open to, you know, just kind of putting this aside here and then pull that Norman Ridge piece in there and looking at what, what we're doing with the RS1 and this, this other proposal. And I guess doing nothing with 100 lots just doesn't strike me. That doesn't make sense. And I know there's been historical things, but we, we've changed R1 already. We're making those changes there. Why wouldn't that apply to the 100 lots? And then Norman Ridge is asking for something as well. So that, that's, that's the piece where I'm kind of stuck here. And so I, you know, as a compromise, I would go with what you said tonight.
I think I said what you asked for, actually.
Yeah.
If I, if I can be blunt about it.
Please, yeah.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. What I'm proposing is that we do do an, a similar densification to the RS1 district, and then, you know, consider a petition from the Norman Ridge community to be considered in the RS1 zone. That's what, that's what I think I'm saying. And I think you're saying the same thing, in the sense that let's, let's bring back this along with RS1. We got everything done, else done, which is great. Congrats. That's amazing. We bring the, we bring the team back to do this in, in, and have it be comprehensive to include the RS1 district and understand what the densification opportunity is there as well. And then we can, we can solve those things together. And then any, any part of the city that would like to apply or petition to be part of RS1 as opposed to R1 can do that. That doesn't preclude, that's not, that's not precluding any other part of the city that might meet those qualifications. Am I, I mean, all over the city, right?
No, I mean, I think that that last part is where I got a little more problems with that. But, you know, I think that, I think that's the beginning part to kind of start off with, because, you know, there's got to be density there, which I think we agree. We agree that there's, there's got to be density in that RS1.
Yeah.
I think I'm okay with, with the idea that, you know, certainly that 22,000 that was in their proposal, I like that better, better than the 32. That's, that's a much better, I would prefer that it, we brought it all the way down to the, to the, to the existing standard that we have here. But, you know, we could always ask the staff to come back after 10 years and, and look at that again. So no, I think I'm with you. I'm not really open to, you know, other than adding the Norman Ridge, I'm not really open to adding more folks to that, to that, to that district, other than the Norman Ridge. They've been here. They've made that proposal. I'd really like to keep that as a closed, that 100-plus, whatever the Norman Ridge would be. But, you know, I could certainly want to come back and have that conversation later in terms of what that openness is, just so we could kind of get to a conclusion tonight. Staff has spent a lot of time on this. I, I just, you know, in my, in my perspective, that's where I would have the problems.
Okay. Let me see if I'm, if I have this correct. So moving forward on what we're talking about here, we've got agreement on a good chunk of it, maybe a bit more discussion on the single-family. Then to similarly move forward with the R1 zoning district, RS1, excuse me, RS1, thank you, to try and increase the density in the RS1, maybe limit or reduce lot size? Is that what you're saying, Councilmember?
Yes, sir, Mayor.
So basically, do what we've done with the R1, we kind of do something similar, but not to the, quite the extreme with the RS1, to try and increase density, density in the RS1 district?
Yes, sir. So the, I mean, I don't know if this is the right number, but if you took the 29% reduction that's proposed in R1, and you applied that same proportion to the RS1 district, where it's now 33,000, you'd be at 23,400 square feet. And so I don't know if that, I don't know if that, they haven't done the analysis to know whether or not, what that does in terms of opening up opportunity, but I think that's what I would like to see.
Okay.
What does, what does that do to opening up the, the same opportunities we're trying to yield from the other functions?
And Councilmember Lohman, if I'm understanding what you're saying, is that you would be open to doing something like that in the RS1 district, but only as it applies to Norman Ridge, because you don't want others to apply for the RS1 status? Is that correct?
Yeah, I think the RS1 is, is fine in the, in adding Norman Ridge in here. That's fine. When we start adding in more folks, I'm not open to that. That, that's a piece I don't agree with.
Questions specific to this? Councilmember Carter?
To clarify, I mean, we would still have very specific RS1 standards, so any neighborhood could apply, but they would have to meet the criteria, which I'm guessing most neighborhoods across the city probably, well, depending on what it is, right? Like, we can't really say that at this point. And so I guess there's a process, though. We couldn't just say only this neighborhood can do it, all the rest you can't. Like, there is a process that neighbors, that neighborhoods would go through.
Mr. Johnson, you want to weigh in here?
Mayor, so much good, things are happening. I don't want to get in the way and goof things up, but what I would say is that one of the challenges that we've had with RS1 is that the, how it has been applied to properties has not been uniform in terms of the level of conformity that has been applied to. So a few of the neighborhoods, there's varying levels of meeting that 33,000. And as policymakers, you have every right to zone a property how you want to, but if those parcels don't meet the underlying zoning district requirements, that's not a planning best practice. That's not what you learn in planning school kind of thing. That's not what you learn in planning school kind of thing. But, so what I'm getting at is that if you lower it to 22,000, what staff is urging you to do is establish very rigid criteria that you follow. And I mean, I'm not going to tell an individual councilmember how to, what their perspective should or should not be. I just think that the city should be consistent in how they approach that and what levels of conformity that the city will tolerate in a subsequent request if you were to go in that direction. And that's not the only, that's one of five factors. Yeah.
Just to, just to put a finer point on that, Mr. Mayor, if you do, if you do go back, as I have had the opportunity to do, thanks to some diligent folks in the neighborhood there, go back to 2003, the neighborhood just to the south of Norman Ridge was granted RS1 status with less criteria than this neighborhood has been sitting and waiting for for 20 years. They, they were, they were put into a position where it was said, you probably should look at them for this status, and then it just never happened for 20 years. So, so we, that inconsistency, that inconsistent application, as you're referring to, is exemplified in the RS1 district, in fact, to the detriment of the neighbors that are sitting here in front of you today. So I think we can get to a consistent RS1 standard. I think we should try to do that. I think it should be more dense than it is now, and I think we'll get some opportunity there. But we haven't done the analysis, so we don't know what that looks like, and I guess what I'm asking for is maybe we can take a look. And then, and then the Norman Ridge and/or any other community that wants to apply for that status can do that.
Right, councilmember Mua was next on the list, and then we'll back to councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Mua?
I, I think the, the big thing with me is that it had, we have to have a step forward. And I had a, a challenge with the outcome piece, right? I didn't think that this was going to do enough. I think this one piece is the biggest part of the conversation, the policy that's here. So we take this one piece out, that takes out a lot of what we're trying to do to establish a baseline. And as I've been thinking about this, the word that comes out that we talked about a lot tonight was opportunity. The other word I want to include is choice, is because it, regardless of what these proposals are, it's continuing to be up to the homeowner and the market to drive what happens with the lots that are in Bloomington. Just because we change these doesn't necessarily mean overnight, every house that qualifies is going to get torn down and new houses are going to be built up to replace those. That's just not going to happen. It's just not market feasible, it's not financially feasible. But what it does is creates that opportunity so that if you, as a homeowner, have worked your whole life to, to have an opportunity to buy a house and you want to do something with your land, the government should not be in the way to allow you to do that. And that's the biggest thing for me, is that if you're a homeowner, you worked your whole life to do this, you do what you want to do with your land. It's not your neighbor who's going to be the one that tells you, you can't do this. It's not going to be the city that tells you that you can't do this. If you want to not sell to a developer, you can do that. Developers not covered under fair housing practices. They don't fall in those things. If you want to sell to another single-family home so that a single-family occupier will be in your house when you move on, you can do that. And so this, if we take this one out, removes the opportunity, and it doesn't allow us to take a step forward to establish those baselines, because the conversations we're going to have with RS1 are in addition on top of this, and it's not enough to take this one piece out for me in this case.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, councilmember Mua. I think you said that very eloquently. The reality is, is I question the need for multiple zoning districts for single-family and two-family homes. They're the same. I don't see why the same standard doesn't apply to everyone and then allow the marketplace to go within there. It's a beautiful neighborhood in Norman Ridge. We have other places with lots of natural things. And you know what? People that can afford it buy lots and build nice houses there. And that's what happens, and frankly, that's why Norman Ridge exists. It was not built to the minimum standard, it was built larger than that. And I think it's also important to keep in mind, because we are talking about Norman Ridge, and I'm not, not trying to, to put them on the spot, but the reality is, is half of the people that live in the Norman Ridge development only live in houses because lots were subdivided. So that has already happened there, and it's still a wonderful, awesome neighborhood, and it will continue to be. I don't see the need for, for two different things. I think Norman Ridge folks have brought forth a lot of really good stuff in terms of how do we utilize our zones to protect those things that are important to the community. And I think those are important discussions to have. The other thing I would say about having multiple zones is the history of these things, of residential zoning, is somewhat intentionally awful, a lot unintentionally has huge negative consequences. And we know that, we know that as we sit here today. We had a presentation about it earlier, but, but we all know that. We all know that this has been used as a tool to exclude, and I'm not prepared to use government power to exclude opportunities from people. I think that opportunities, I think our job is to provide more opportunities for people. Let them get in the marketplace, let them have those things, and let's come up with new places for people to live. Our seniors have a place to downsize into, new families coming into the community, just like I did when I bought my first home here. Let's find more opportunities, not, not try to exclude those paths. I think that the Norman Ridge folks are extremely sincere in their beliefs and what they have brought forward and their neighborhood, and I love the passion, I absolutely do, and you should be passionate about your neighborhood, as should so many neighborhoods within this community. And I truly, honestly believe that your neighborhood will be amazing 50 years from now, just like when it started, well, probably started 70 years ago. I always feel like I'm younger than I used to be, so. So that, that's my thoughts. In terms of, you know, I think I can wait to do the RS1, and I think that there is still a pathway that we could talk about that, but, you know, if you want my honest opinion, as I sat here today, without any analysis or data, I'd wait for that to make a decision, but I'd just get rid of RS1. And apologize, I think you already went through that fight or something, so maybe, so maybe some others did. But I, you know, I just think one uniform standard and let the marketplace drive it, probably said the same thing four times now, so that, that's where I'm at on this. I, I think it'll work, I think it'll work towards the community.
Councilmember Martin and then councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll, I'll try and be brief on this one. I agree with councilmember Nelson wholeheartedly, and I would bet the reason why there's very specific, there's like four very specific, very small RS1 neighborhoods, and I got a feeling it arises out of some of the problematic things that you first brought up when those came around decades and decades and decades ago. And I'd be curious what, curious what might be on some deeds. But overall, I think, I like the idea of moving forward with the reduction to R1 as a baseline and coming back with proposed changes alongside that to RS1, because the criteria, assuming both of those, R1 went forward, the criteria I would like to see a neighborhood need to demonstrate to qualify to, upgrading is not the right term, but upgrading from R1 to RS1 at that point, I don't think exist. Like, I don't see a viable reason why a neighborhood would go to R1 to RS1. But if we pass both of those, and in that conversation, we can come up with those objective criteria, I'll be the first one to say that makes sense. So just for the baseline of getting this work done, I would say moving forward with both of these on a parallel track with the intention of at least passing R1, and if we can figure out RS1 at the time, getting that done as well.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Carter, I apologize, I lost track of who was in the queue. My bad.
It's okay, I'll forgive you, it's okay. No. So first, I just want to thank you, Nick and Erica, you guys did such a phenomenal job, not just tonight, but throughout these conversations for many months now, and just really appreciate the diligent work, listening to community. I know you've really been taking into consideration everything they're saying too, taking into consideration what we're all saying, and so just really appreciate it. So I'll just kind of start at high level. Of course, I am very supportive of affordable housing. I am so supportive of the city's partnerships to create affordable homeownership opportunities. I think it's absolutely the right path to go down, especially because I actually do not believe that these zoning changes in and of themselves would increase affordability. Like, the research does not prove it. It doesn't. And so, and actually, some research suggests the opposite, right? That it actually increases home values, which then is not providing accessibility or opportunity, and it can lead to displacement. So I feel like we haven't talked enough about that piece, but I just want to put it out there. Very supportive of reviewing and changing, if needed, the environmental protection components of our city code across the residentially zoned districts. And then I do agree that we should be looking at RS1. I don't know why we would exempt them, whether it is making everything one residential zone or, I don't know what the outcome would be, but it doesn't seem fair to apply this across the city but exempt small little pockets, right? And then kind of going back to my, my point about affordability, one of the studies that I was reading suggested that there may be unintended consequences, which I talked about of broader upzoning, which relates to broader affordability. And so I guess before I would feel super comfortable moving with the, moving forward with the single-family lot size, I want to know what can we do to mitigate those unintended consequences? So if we start to see that we're not actually producing affordable units, other than the city properties that we're working with partners on, I mean, what are we going to do about that? How do we mitigate that? And there are some suggestions in literature, we have not talked about those things at all, and so, and this is not on staff because we haven't talked about it as a council, but I just think that, like, we, we have to go in eyes wide open that, like, these broader, these zoning changes in and of themselves will not necessarily increase affordability. There are cities like Austin who, when those decision-makers passed their zoning, their upzoning, they promised affordability to their community, and that is not what is happening. And so I just don't want us to pass these changes with the assumption that we're just going to have, that it's going to create all these affordable housing opportunities, because it may not necessarily do that. And so, those are my comments. I, I would rather kind of wait and look comprehensively at R1 and RS1 together and compare and make decisions then, so that's where I'm at.
Thank you, councilmember. But before we keep chiming in here, we're down to nine minutes before our cutoff time. I don't know that we're going to be done at 11:00. I would like to be, but I'm, I'm going to move right now that we extend the deadline until 11:15, no later than 11:15. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Got a motion in a second to extend our end time to 11:00, no later than 11:15. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed 7-0, so we've got that under our belt. But now that puts us on a deadline, so I think we need to kind of come around a bit of cohesion here. And the cohesion can be, we move forward or not. I mean, if we, if we, we know that we need five votes to get to approval of this ultimately, and if we can't direct staff in such a way with five nodding heads, it doesn't make sense to move this on and, and continue this conversation. And that might take a little give and take between everybody to try and get to, you know, if we're going to get to five, or again, as I said, or not. I mean, that's an entirely possible outcome of this as well. In order, I saw councilmember Nelson, councilmember Delisandro, and then councilmember Lohman. Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I actually tend to agree with councilmember Carter that I don't think this will produce a ton of affordable housing, and I, I don't think that's the only reason to do it. I think housing units are housing units, families are families, they deserve to have the opportunity to live somewhere. And I agree, I mean, I think with the whole ecosystem of what we, what we heard about, I think if you look at the whole region, there are just so many pressures on that, and, you know, there are places where people will go to build houses, but they're very, very challenged, even with the cost savings that we can see from what we're taking a look at, you know, you're still not, if, you know, even if you do those things, I mean, the HRA with all its support can build a house for $470,000. We're not all of a sudden going to start building $200,000 houses. And where I see a lot of like the upzoning, you know, taking a look at type, type things is, you know, looking, going from single and two-family to three and four-family and, and really trying to push that density and that type of thing, which, which I think residential, single-family and two-family areas are important to the suburban experience and, and are part and parcel of why a lot of people are here and what they're looking for. And so I'm not quite ready to go there, but I, I don't think we should sell it as affordable housing. I, I completely agree with that, but I don't think that means you don't do it.
Councilmember Delisandro?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'm a very outcome-driven person, and, and I appreciate the notion of opportunity and everything else. And by the way, I'm not suggesting, I think, I think the, the, if, if anybody implied that I'm not for reducing the zone, the width and, and square footage of single-family, that's not what I'm saying. That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying it, I think it's, I think it's, I think it is disingenuous to assume that that is the biggest driver for the changes that we can make when we heard that's just not true today. We heard our, our great HRA director talk about the, the fact that they can do two-family today. They have two lots to work with, so I don't really know what we're talking about, but okay, let's go there. The, the two-family stuff that we have all over the city already, if we could get incentive, incentives to actually build them, would do infinitely more, infinitely more today without a single change to lot size, infinitely more today to actually solve the infills, like, opportunity gap than anything else we could do as a, as a council right now, is to find ways to pull the levers on two-family dwellings in this city. That's what the data tells us. We've actually said that we're going to move forward and fix the setback requirement and, and, and fix the garage requirements. Those are the two biggest things that our planner said tonight, were the reasons that those calls that he gets for two-family dwellings can't be, he can't say yes to, solving those. So I, you know, I don't think that, I don't think it's true to say that because we're not doing this one piece of this thing tonight, that we're not making great progress on the ability, the, the opportunity to have housing in the city, I just don't think that that's true. Now, there's also a couple of other things that we need to consider, right? There are, I don't know if anybody's ever read it, just me probably because I'm a weirdo, land value taxes. The idea that, there's an idea out there that you tax the land more than you tax the house, and guess what people who have lots of land do? Build more houses. We haven't pulled that trigger tonight, but that's an option for us. You want to talk about increasing opportunity, we can do that. I mean, those things are, we, you know, I don't know what goal we're trying to specifically achieve and why we have to do this one thing in order to make that goal a reality, because I don't see that that's true because of all the other things that we've talked about tonight. So at the end of the day, if you guys ha, if you have five votes for this, go ahead and see if you do. If you don't, all I'm saying is I'd like to have a more, I'd like to have the R1 and RS1 plans brought together so that we can vote on them and, and, and take a look at them comprehensively. So we, if we decide to get rid of RS1, if we decide, whatever it is we do, but we can bring them together so we're truly impacting the city, single zone, whatever, and everything else, they can get started on, as far as I'm concerned, because we got consensus on it tonight. That sounds like a lot of progress. So that's, that's where I'm at. If you got the five votes to pass it anyway, though, Mr. Mayor, go for it.
Councilmember Lohman?
Well, Mayor, I'm, you know, I'm counting noses, and I don't, I don't think we're there yet with, 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 with what you're, yeah, no. Just, just based on what I'm hearing, I don't know, maybe I'm, I'm reading the tea leaves wrong too, that could be it. So let me, let me suggest a couple of things, because I too am kind of results-oriented as well, and I'd hate to see us not get anything accomplished here. So I think there is the items we've pretty much, you know, with respect, except for me, I'm the odd duck, I'm fine with that. We could get those, those things pushed forward. I, I do know that, you know, this one that we're looking at right here is an issue, some of us, it's the, you know, the RS piece that's got to be resolved. So I wonder if we could, you know, pass those other, other four things tonight, because I think we can all agree.
Let me just clarify, we're not passing anything tonight.
Not passing, we're recommending.
We're recommending that we pass.
With the staff to move this forward. Thank you for clarifying that. Recommend that we pass those four things at a, at a subsequent meeting and then look to resolve that RS1 zoning district with respect to the R1 district, have more discussion around that, eliminate that one, bring it together, create different standards, you know, whoever it may be, find that as a different solution. And then what I may suggest is a third thing that we could look to do, because I think part of it, this is data-driven, and I don't, absent not having any data, I think it's hard to argue against this. And I might, my, my question that I have just myself, I say, hey, you know, you know, what would be the alternative if, if we, we don't go down this route that staff has? And I, we spent a lot of time, a lot of energy, a lot of tax resources to do this, so I wonder if it makes some sense, because I, I too, you know, have the trouble with the, with the affordability of this. And, you know, again, I don't And again, I don't have any problems with adding more homes and more things, I agree with Councilmember Nelson, Councilmember Carter, and I think they've said it very eloquently. I wonder if we move forward with some type of pilot, where we take part of the city, and I don't know what that looks like, you know, where we say, you know, we're going to do this, just as this is here, we're going to take a part of the city that's representative of the city, and let's implement this and see, you know, what happens with that, roll it through for a while as we're talking about this other, this other element here of whether or not we want to eliminate the RS2 or blend them into R1. So, I just wonder if that's a way to kind of get some data, keep moving forward on this, separate, because we'd have the three pieces there, and that might be a way to kind of move forward. So, in summary, in the future time, move forward the four things that we absolutely seem to all agree on. Secondary, look to have a broader discussion to bring forward the RS1 and R1 zoning districts. In the meantime, while the other ones are already working, and R2, we look at a pilot program to try to, try to see if it actually works.
Thanks, Councilmember. I don't know that zoning as a pilot program is a thing. I don't know that it's doable. I don't know if it's legal, I don't know if it's doable.
Well, let's ask staff. I mean, can I ask staff here, see, you know, if we could pick a part of the city?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Lohman, I think to create a pilot, you'd be creating a new zoning district, I believe, an alternative to the R1. R1, I don't know what we would call it, but it basically would be equivalent to an alternative zoning district, so just heads up about that. That might involve rezoning properties or rezoning actions, like we talked about, one component. Another thing, just speaking with kind of my colleagues back there, was that our concern, not, I don't want to discourage you, but one concern that we have is that in order to gather any amount of actionable data, it would take a minimum of five years to really learn something about the pilot area, if you will. It's not, it wouldn't be something that has a short turnaround of learning what the kind of takeaways were. So just two things to think about there.
And how much, I mean, because theoretically, if we did create this other zone that we would pilot, would be the things we're getting ready to do, essentially, if we said, hey, this is going to work, we could simply rezone the rest of the city with that zone, right? I mean, we'd already just have a head start on that piece.
Mayor, Councilmember Lohman, you could do that. You would be noticing all those properties and having public hearings around all of what their perspectives are of doing that with the rezoning actions, similar to any rezoning, as you know. But yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I don't, unless you can think of some other way to test this out, that's where I'm struggling, you know. Zoning is the only way I could come up with this. Could you use a plan, you know?
Mayor, Councilmember Lohman, I wish that we had a, I wish that we had some greenfield development areas in the city to do some of those things, not that those would be affordable by any means in today's environment either, but that's one of the challenges we have, is that I recall a thoughtful resident during the public hearing talk about, you know, why can't we do development via PD, planned development? Doing a PD with lower lot standards, even if it, it's just not worth it to a developer to do a three-lot PD. I mean, I can think of very few parcels in Bloomington where you could get a substantive amount of density to make it kind of worth their while in a single-family, even two-family setting like that, doing PD development. So that's kind of akin to a pilot, this PD, but I just don't think it's there.
I don't know that at 11 o'clock on a Monday night, we want to take a bite on something like that as a, you know, dive into a pilot program that we're not sure with everything else. Councilmember Carter, and then Councilmember Nelson, and then let's see if we can figure out a direction here. Councilmember Carter?
The only other piece that I would speak to is part of my comments of just mitigating unintended consequences, and I am assuming that you all have thought through these things. It's just us not knowing what they are, and so if you could come back with some of the things that you would suggest as, you know, like, what are the things that we should be looking at in terms of indicators to watch? I think you brought that up in terms of, like, really measuring affordability, if we're saying that affordability is our goal in some of these things, but then also, yeah, just within the state of Minnesota, what else do we have the capacity or the capabilities to do? What else are we allowed to do to try to help mitigate some of those consequences if we do start to see that, you know, we're not really doing anything around affordability?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Carter, I would say we do have a very robust assessing department, and they will have the ability, assuming some changes go forward, they would have the ability to evaluate that against some of our peer communities. Certainly, again, I don't think it's a short time window, I think it would be a long time study to actually realize what those potential differences are, but subsequent councils have every right to dial, make adjustments that they feel are necessary to address that very issue.
I've just seen in some of the papers that I was reading that, like, I think one of the options was the one that Lona talked about, taxing land value. This paper in front of me says property tax relief, I don't know if we could even do that in Minnesota. Inclusionary zoning, which we already have our opportunity housing ordinance, I don't know if there'd be something else that we could do with that. Racial equity analyses, how do we incorporate those into the, like, this decision-making and through the planning process and approval process? Like, there, I, those are some of the things that were really catching my attention when I was reading through the papers, so. And maybe that's already built in, and you could just highlight those things, but then if there are other things that we could be looking at, I think would be helpful.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. So, just a question for Mr. Johnson. Is it feasible for you, from a staff perspective, to take out the single-family and bring forth something we can move forward, and then work on R1, RS1, and maybe get that done at a later time? Is that feasible from a staff level?
Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, yes, we can revise the ordinance to bring back the elements that has council consensus and direction on, certainly.
Okay. Think that was your proposal?
Yeah.
Okay, at least, in part?
In part, yeah.
And then, because it sounds like we don't have consensus on the single-family standards and which way we should go, how we should do RS1, all of that stuff, so we may need a little bit more time, a little bit more information. To Councilmember Lohman's point about data, I think that there is probably data out there. Minneapolis has done this previously, I think St. Louis Park maybe. I think we could work with those cities and just ask their planning team to see if we could do that, or we could work with the Realtors Association, who have a tremendous amount of data, to see if we can get that data to help provide some of that information, and it'll, it'll give us more information, more data. But we don't have to wait five years, we don't have to wait to try to figure out a new zoning or a PD or something like that, if that's acceptable to my colleagues. The other thing, Councilmember Lohman had a list of things, I still think it's of value to consider, what I heard was maybe one of the biggest factors from the neighborhood, and that's the tree and natural resource preservation, and should our rules be stricter, tighter, better, totally different than what we have? I don't know, but I think it's worth discussing, because that was the big thing that I heard about from people within the neighborhood, is that's what they love about their neighborhood, is they had that, and is there a way to protect that in a way that, you know, benefits the entire community, I think makes sense. Think those are my only, oh, one last point. Subsidy for affordable housing is absolutely something that is necessary. What I get frustrated about, and I've talked about this about monthly family, is when we subsidize our own rules that drive up the cost of something. So we're taking money from taxpayers to pay for our own rules about it, but I think, you know, Councilmember Dalisandro is right, a lot of what we see in here will reduce costs, even if we don't get that single-family portion of it done next meeting, next month, in a little while. I think it's important to do, I put out where I think we should go, but these other things will help drive costs and provide opportunities, so.
All right, let's, we're pushing up here, let's count noses really quick. We've talked about all the other buckets except for the single-family lot size with impervious surface. Can everybody agree to the other buckets that we had talked about earlier? Can I see at least five nodding heads? We can do that? All right, we can do that. For the single-family lot size with impervious surface, I'm counting at least a couple of folks who are saying this is a must-have. Is that correct? And I've seen at least a couple of folks who are still on the fence or not quite sure about this, on the fence. If we, and then also the question about whether or not we do RS1. You know, if we continue the review of RS1, thoughts on, I mean, nodding heads on that? Do we continue the review of RS1 as we push forward on this? I'm not seeing five here, so, okay, okay, so we can do that. So if we do that, also agree with your comment about tree cover and so on, because as Nick mentioned earlier, given how the world has changed, just environmentally in the past five years, that's probably something we need to review anyway, so put that on the to-do list also, because you've got nothing else going on, and we can do this. Very quickly, Councilmember.
Just a point of clarity, I think it was, trees were a really important thing to the neighborhood, but I think even in your presentation, you used the language environmental protection components or something like that. I wrote it down when you said it. I think it's kind of broader.
A little broader than trees.
Right, like, as we, because we did declare climate emergency, what are the things that we should be looking at beyond trees, right? Whether it's impervious surface or all of the things.
Yep, yep. And then here's what I'm going to suggest also, as we bring this forward, and just and see where we end up with this. I think it's worth the discussion and to put, to get some work done and to move this forward. We've talked about moving the things forward that we've talked about. I'm going to suggest also to move forward the single-family lot size, have the discussion at a public hearing, take a vote on it, and it's up or down. And then, then we can move forward, then we can have staff move forward on what we do pass, and if not this, then not this. I think it gives us an opportunity just to keep moving on this, and we can, as Councilmember Dalisandro said, there are things we can claim as something that we got done in terms of the other pieces, the other buckets of all of this. So, we can separate them out, and we can do it, and we can structure this in such a way that we can look at the different possibilities and have a discussion and make a decision on the single-family. Would that be amenable to folks? Councilmember?
Super quick. This isn't like a development project, if we vote something down, we can continue to work on and bring it back right away, we don't have to wait a certain time period, okay? Get in a nod, I just want to make sure we weren't boxing ourselves out for...
Yeah, that's a good point, that's a good point. So I think it just, it makes sense, it allows, we can start to move forward, as Lona said, we can move forward on at least some things, we can talk about the continuing the discussion of the RS1, we can talk about the rest of this, but rather than, you know, sacrificing the good, looking for the, you know, the perfect, we can at least start moving forward.
Sure, Mayor, I just want to ask one question here. So if I join with other members here and just do the first direction, Mayor, would you be willing to go along with that?
I didn't, I don't know what you're asking there.
So, so I think there is, Martin, so, and so what I'm asking, it's you directly, if I say that I would go along with it, with this first direction, direct staff to bring the city code amendment in comprehensive plan text amendment as proposed, would you be willing to go along with that?
Well, I think we just kind of talked about that. All these things we've talked about, we're willing to push forward, but I do want them separated out so that if we can have, I think, the individual discussion and the vote on the single-family. I think that's yes, I think that's, that would be acceptable. Everybody cool with that? Does that make sense to staff?
I think so. Might have to watch the video again, but...
You got it? Yep.
No, that's okay.
Good enough, all right.
Okay.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Thanks for the discussion. Council, thanks for the discussion, and I think, and we'll continue the discussion, I think as we, as we bring this back, we've made enough of the change that we'll have a public hearing, we'll make sure that we can talk our way through this, but then I think to commit to move forward on what we want to move forward on, and if we decide not to move forward on another piece, I think we can break this out, but at least keep moving it forward and keep doing something and trying to accomplish the goals that we're looking for. All right? Thank you, Nick. Thank you, Erica. Well done. And thank you, Glenn, for your leadership over there. Well done. Our final piece is the council policy and issue update, just very quickly here, recap of our listening session, we heard from Wilson Edwards, who's planning a football and rugby event camp on July 8th at Jefferson High School, and he's looking for support, and we said we would certainly do that, and we're going to help him out as well as we can. And then we also received the petition from our friends, Dan and Kim, from the Norman Ridge neighborhood, and we had answered a quick question there, but that was the extent of our listening session this evening. Mr. Verbogi, anything to add?
Not a chance, Mr. Mayor.
Not a chance, good enough. Council, anything to add? Look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion in a second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 7-0, thank you so very much. Thanks, Council, thanks, staff. Thanks to the neighbors who stuck us out, stuck it out with us, thanks much. Thanks.